Everyone. In every instance, as we go through the discussion tonight, I will be making a request for roll call votes to identify sentiment of board members. When I start the discussion and I ask for opinions or perspectives, I am going to do a roll call vote. I'm going to work alphabetically and I would appreciate it if everybody helped me do this. So that we can manage the meeting in an effective way. And so what we want you to do is state your name. And and then whatever indication you have for whatever the the issue is that we are actually raising at the time. Okay, and let me begin by saying, so that's the ground rules. We're going to try to use alphabetical sentiment votes, so we know where we are. Let me say as a beginning that, so that's point one, point two. We are also joined tonight by Town Planning Director Lauren Lind and Assistant Director of Planning, Permits and Inspections Department Jennifer Orem. Lauren will explain how public participation or how the public can participate and to ask questions. So Lauren, would you like to start with that?
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Chair. For any of the members in the audience who are interested in participating in tonight's discussion, there's a raise hand function that you can use to notify us that you'd like to speak to the board. And in addition, we request that you input your name and address into the question and answer function at the bottom. You can also input questions that way. And when the time becomes appropriate for whatever topic is at hand, we will address the questions that you have stated there. So again, if you could put your name and address in the Q and A section for the record, and we will address comments that way. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. The first item on our agenda is an application for approval not required under subdivision control law for 70 Black Horse Lane. The applicant has submitted a request for withdrawal for this application. The board will not take action at this time. Let me just make a point about information. Over the last two weeks, you have received information about this site. In addition, Clark Brewer has done analysis as well as Charis North. We will hear when the time comes from everybody that has a perspective. And there probably will be some additional information that comes to us from those two sources. So when we get to this issue again, expect to have more information. All right. The second item on agenda is the continuing continuance of the hearing on the proposed 124 slash 87 Elm Street HV BOD special permit and site plan approval. That public hearing is scheduled for 7:00 PM. As we cannot open the hearing prior to the noticed time, we will use this time to address some administrative issues. The first that we will address is are, is there any public comment for any items not on the agenda?
Madam Chair, may I just request a vote to withdraw? I think we need to withdraw, approve the withdrawal for the A and R and then do a roll call. Apologies for the interruption.
No problem. Thanks very much. All right. So may I get a motion to continue this? And I want to do a roll call?
So it's just you're approving to
With this approving this withdrawal.
Correct.
I make a motion to approve the withdrawal.
Under the subdivision control law for 70 Black Horse Lane. I'll start with Clark Brewer.
Was there a second? How about a second? I'll second it and then I will say aye. Clark Brewer says aye.
Thank you. Paul Colery.
Paul Colery, aye.
Tom Callahan. Paul Grady.
Paul Grady, aye.
Eric Potter.
Eric Potter, aye.
Amy Glassmeyer, aye. All right. Thank you for that. And thank you for that, Jen. Then let's go to is there, is there any public comment for any items not on the agenda?
I see none.
All right. Thank you.
Planning, planning board member comments?
All right. Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm sure Lauren would probably mention something about this, but we did have a meeting of the Elm Street corridor redesign working group this afternoon and we reviewed a proposal from engineering team to have public outreach and some preliminary design work, some investigation. We talked about getting traffic counts. One of the members did some preliminary designs. It seems to be progressing nicely, but the timetable looks like it if it's if it's a four month duration for public outreach and and sort of preliminary design, which if it started in February would, it might finish up in in May and then and then the engineering work would commence as and there are there are other things, but it seems to be progressing nicely. And I don't know if Lauren has anything to add.
Thank you, Clark. Yes, I'll just add that we, the Elm Street corridor has chosen as of today to progress with using Weston and Sampson, who as this board is familiar with because they've been the peer review on this, the project that we're continuing the hearing at seven o'clock for 124 and 87 Elm Street. And then just as a reminder for people, this, the Weston and Sampson, the relationship with the town is the town had gone out for a request for qualifications several months ago to just as a best practice to get on call engineering and peer review services for our permitting and land use departments and boards and committees. So this was one of two firms out of approximately seven or eight RFQ respondents that we had contracted with. So, you know, Jason Federico from the engineering department and I had reached out to suggest that they give a sample sort of scope proposal for this type of work to meet with the Elm Street corridor group and give a sense of what that might be. And the group was pleased with what we were doing, followed and exploring this as a path. And we'll continue to update the planning board as necessary.
Comments from other planning board members about this topic? All right. So then let's move on. The next item of business is we need to approve minutes. We have minutes for Wednesday, August 5th, 2020 and Wednesday, September 9th, 2020. Did you all get a chance to look at the minutes prior to the meeting?
Yeah.
If anybody didn't get a chance, why don't we take a couple of minutes just so you can do a quick scan? I will reconvene in two minutes.
Let's just approve them so we can use this time to talk about stuff that we never get to talk about.
I do.
That's fine, but I want to make sure that people have a chance to look at the minutes. If we approve them and then there's an issue, that's a problem.
Well, I think everybody has a responsibility to do so beforehand, you know? Unless somebody says they haven't.
Boy, seconds go slowly when you need them to go fast. All right, I will yield to the planning board member. I now need a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Second.
All right. Clark Brewer. Please say your name.
Aye.
Tom Callahan.
Aye.
Please say your name first.
Tom Callahan, aye.
Thank you. Paul Colery.
Paul Colery, aye.
Thank you. Paul Grady.
Aye, if anyone can hear me.
Can you say Paul Grady too?
I can. Paul Grady.
Thank you. And Eric Potter.
Eric Potter, aye.
Thank you. Amy Glassmeyer, aye. Lauren Lind, the next item of business, Lauren Lind would like to explain annual town meeting warrant article intent process. Planning board is to determine whether we will move forward with a large house review amendment intent. This is a discussion. This is not a decision at this point, is it, Lauren? You're muted?
Always, I always get other people doing that. So thank you. The warrant article intent process is a request from the town manager's office to get a statement of intent for any articles that are planned for annual town meeting. This is a regular process that occurs. Each time we have a town meeting, actually, and this in particular instances in preparation for annual town meeting, which will likely, I don't have a date, but likely be May or early June, if I had to guess. The articles are due by the 15th. And what this means when it says article is really just a simple form that is stating the intent of what sort of bylaw you would like to put forward, what the purpose is and who the best contact information for. It is not, and by any means, it doesn't have to be language ready at this time. That's something that we can work on, but really what this is is sort of an informal placeholder so that the town manager's office knows how many approximate articles are coming down the pipeline, potentially to be on an annual town meeting warrant upcoming this spring. So what I will inform you of is that I've heard from the zoning bylaw working group, which is a subcommittee of the master plan implementation committee. They have been working on sort of strategizing a series of sort of near and long term potential zoning bylaw amendments. And two items that they are tentatively currently planning to bring to town meeting this spring is one would be allow, an amendment that would allow a use variance. That is something that chairman of the zoning board of appeals, Woody Chick, submitted on behalf of the zoning bylaw working group. And there's also in the works, something for a land alteration, which I'm sure Tom can fill us in on more in a moment. I will notify you that I have filled out a form for a floodplain and watershed protection district update that is mandated by FEMA. If you remember, this is something that we were scheduled to bring forward for the last annual town meeting. We did move it forward. There were some other articles that were tabled, but then at the last minute, due to regional issues with adoption and changing annual town meeting dates due to COVID, FEMA rescinded that version of the map update and said that there would be something to follow. And now that's what we have now. So we do need to move forward with that in automatic. If failure to adopt this update would be an automatic removal from the national flood insurance program. So I've submitted an article intent for that. And then the question that I've been asked by, through the chair of the master plan committee and from the working group from the zoning bylaw review is whether the planning board would like to move forward, submitting an article intent for revision to the large house review by law. So with that, I'll turn it back to the planning board for your discussion.
All right. So Lauren, can you be, can you clarify? Do we have to do anything more than discuss tonight?
Correct. I just need a yes or no. We would like to proceed. Please submit the article of intent and then Jen and I will take care of the paperwork that that does. And then we'll continue a discussion on what that language for the revision would be and move through the process towards preparing for an article for annual town meeting.
All right. So we have approximately 14 minutes prior to 7:00 PM when the next agenda item is. So if there's an interest in discussing the large house review, that's what we can do now. Let me just say by by introduction that back in 2018, an analysis was done on the large house review. We certainly can build on the database that that was derived from and analyze what's happened subsequent to that. We also can have staff provide us with their experience in interacting with the public and through the process of large house review, because that's been an issue is the extent to which it is difficult to work with. So why don't we just open the floor? Please raise your hand and I will call on you. Otherwise you'll be muted. Everybody's going to be muted. And we'll do about 13 minutes of discussion. First question, Clark Brewer.
Yeah, I have no problem with putting a placeholder for the large home review modifications. But I just a couple of points of clarification. We have to have our list sent to the town manager by the 15th. That's the 15th of January? Two days from now? Okay. And if I remember correctly, a year ago, there was several zoning bylaw changes that we had anticipated. And I, it's almost, it's, it's, it's a year ago, and I know they all got tabled to the extent that we could. Is can, can you refresh our memory as to what else we we had back then that that was seemingly really important? That we were going to have placeholders for? Is there anything that's missing other than the large home review and FEMA? And sorry, was there another one?
Yes, there were several others. There was one that was the changing of the zoning designation of the Whitney Spur Rail Trail parcel. Though we had noticed in that process, we had wanted to change it to open space to be contiguous with the zoning around it, but we realized while going through that process that the area contiguous to that parcel is actually not open space. It's residency. We were going to proceed with changing it to open space anyway. We can still proceed that way. But it's just, just a note that it's not going to be immediately contiguous to open space because there is residency surrounding that. But that was one of the articles. Another article was to modify the solar ground mounted overlay district, I'm not pronouncing it correctly, to allow for a portion of the landfill near the Avalon development to use a portion of the land for a solar overlay. I, we, there has been an A and R completed that would allow for that to be portioned off that way. And since we actually haven't heard anything from that property owner or the proponents from the solar company who had been in contact with us. And now I'm going to turn to Jen to see if she, if her memory is better than mine.
We also were going to correct the single, in the table of use regulations under single family home, it still says SP and should be SPP for the planning board.
Thank you.
No, and and then it was land alteration for Tom, right? We had land alteration and we had large home review.
There were seven, right? We had P one through P seven. So it would be the FEMA, the solar, the Wiggel Trail, Tom's land alteration. The special permit, what was the sixth and seventh?
Large house.
Large house.
Okay.
So I, I guess I would recommend that we, we put a placeholder for all of those.
Accessory dwelling units. That was the other one.
Oh, yeah, that, that one we worked on quite carefully, I believe.
With that being said, I know that the zoning bylaw working group and Tom can confirm that they are working on that as well right now, even looking into it further as an overall housing. So I don't know what the thought, just so you know.
Well, I think it makes sense to put a placeholder for all of those. Since we, we worked on them and they were, they were almost ready for town meeting, but everything got put on hold. So I, that's, that's what I, I think I'd, I'd recommend that we put them all on as placeholders.
Let me ask, does this recommendation require a motion or is this just business that we will attend to?
Is that a question for me?
Yeah.
Oh, I just need a general consensus of the board. It doesn't require a motion. I just need a consensus to know how to proceed. So I think I've heard your consensus.
Okay, fine. That, that reminds me in this conversation, then. Thank you, Clark. A couple of things have happened and and probably deserve a quick update. The chief justice highway retail and residential development and then the Avalon re branding of the housing recently. So could you speak both to the, the project and the Stop and Shop Center as well as the change in Avalon? Lauren?
Yes, I can speak to, I actually reached out to John Hallen, our building inspector for the latest status update for the 390 Chief Justice Christian Highway, which is the development next to Stop and Shop. I'm gonna, he issued, there was residential, residential building permits issued in December. The wiring inspector went out today. It's noted that he, that there's additional work needing to be done in terms of determining the sewage removal, whether it is septic or onsite disposal system. They need to determine their water tie-in and then they need to return to the planning board to finish the modification to site plan. Site plan modification. They had been to the planning board in approximately October or November of 2019 to discuss this. And there is, they were, they were approved to move the building a certain amount of feet, but the additional site work needed further review. So and John Helen is aware of that and he's noted that in their permits. In terms of the, the update to the, the sale of Avalon, there's, I, I don't have much of an update, other than I know that I've been notified that it's changed hands and that I've been contacted by the attorneys representing Avalon to make sure that their affordable housing compliance was in good standing and and it is. So that's all I'll say. And then I will also note, while I have the floor here, our chair of our master plan implementation committee had been raising her hand and had some comments in the Q and A section. So I just turned to her.
All right. You're, you're calling on Katie Dugan, is that correct, Lauren?
Yes, Katie wanted to address the board. She's had a couple of comments.
Recognize Katie Dugan. Chair of Master Plan Implementation Committee.
Thank you. I just wanted to make one note, and we have been trying to coordinate agendas so that the zoning bylaw working group can come before the planning board and have a joint session where we can really talk more fully about what our, our sort of short term and our longer term strategies are. But I did want to make you aware that in the sort of medium term bucket, we have three major kind of groups of things that we're looking at. One is residential zoning. Second is landslide harbor zoning. And the third is a category that we've titled housing options. And and a big piece of that is actually ADUs or accessory dwelling units. And Clark, I know that you raised the issue of potentially just putting in a notice of intent related to that, as you did have some proposed changes that were before the planning board last spring. I would respectfully ask that you might hold on that notice of intent. I think that we would like to bring forward a package of things around housing options. And obviously, ADUs ones, we've already gotten into, we've done benchmarking, we have a memo. But we haven't gotten to the stage where we actually have a markup. And some of the things that we're proposing are a little bit more substantial than what was being proposed in the spring. So I, I wouldn't want to rush that process and bring it forward for May of this year. So our timing was really either fall of 2021 or even spring of 2021. So I, I put it out there that from our perspective, we would rather coordinate on ADUs than bring it forward this spring.
All right. And you meant to say 2022?
Oh, sorry. Yes. Yes.
All right. Are there any comments from anyone about Chief Justice Highway or Avalon? All right. Are there any?
Yes.
Go, go ahead.
One comment on Avalon that I think everyone should keep in mind is that those affordable units are, their approval was that they're deeded in perpetuity. Not 30 years like some affordable housing projects. And that's, I think, an important detail.
Thank you for that. And for everybody, as we go on into the next section of the meeting, I really am going to ask you to please raise your hand using the capacity on Zoom so that it shows up in the margin so I can call on people in order. So we have four minutes. And we can talk about the large house review in that four minute period of time. I'm interested to hear Eric was mentioning the, the issue of information and research on large house review. And if you want to fill in on that, Eric, that would be helpful.
Sure, yes. So my concern to large home review is, is, is pretty simple. I just feel as if they're 3,500 square foot home in the area that I live in is, is a large home. A 3,500 square foot home in many other parts of the town is, is, is not a necessarily a large home compared to the surrounding homes around it. So my number one concern would, would be, you know, identifying what is a large home and perhaps there a large home in, you know, residence A is different than, you know, residence C. And I think it's important to, you know, take a look at that because it unnecessarily, or the way it's gone, large home review has expanded significantly since, since I've come on the planning board and it's almost become in some ways, a design review. And, and I, and I have some issues with that. Because, so if something's good, which I could get, I could get over. But if something's going to require what it requires, I think there has to be some give back or so we have to, you know, really identify, well, is it necessary for someone, a certain area of town to come, submit all these additional items when every other town, every other house in the surrounding area is relatively of the same size? It's, it's a lot, it's a much larger application now. There are a significant number of more requirements. And, you know, I, I just think that, in my opinion, you know, we should take a look at the different areas of town and what constitutes a large home in those different areas. The other issue I have is I do think if you're going to have a large home review, I guess it makes sense to put teeth into it. But I also want to be careful in that I do believe that, you know, in private property rights. And I do believe that people should, within reason, be able to build what's, they're allowed to build according to the town's zoning bylaws. And, you know, I want to be careful in that we don't amend this large home review so that five people on the board, whether it's this board or another board, are basically making decisions on what a homeowner can build on their property. And some of the things now that we review now, and I'll point right to the landscaping or it, it, it seems crazy to me that we review that with a large home review when it's, it's, we would require landscaping plans to come before.
All right. I need to stop you now, Eric, because we're at seven o'clock. And we'll come back to this. And in preparation for a discussion of the large house review, I will circulate some information based on different locations as well as in response to what Eric said. Some of the, how we might address the question of large house reviews in different settings, but I, we have to leave that now. So I'm going to move on to the rest of the meeting. It's 7:00 PM. We'll now reopen the public hearing for 124 87 Elm Street. I'd like to add, introduce a few additional members that are here, including special counsel Charis North, planning consultant Evan Tapper, applicants Ted Lubitz and George McGoldrick, and their counsel, Adam Brodsky. So I am reopening the hearing now. Lauren, is there anybody else that needs to be introduced for this discussion tonight?
I see the only other individual would be John Cavanaro, the applicant's engineer.
All right. Thank you. I, I can't, there are certain things I can see and certain things I can't see. So that's why I asked. Jen will be managing public commentary. So if there are comments that someone is interested in making from the public, then Lauren, how will Jen recognize them?
We, at the end, when we, we take public comment, Jen will take them in the order as specified at the beginning of the meeting. So if anybody would like, please input in the Q and A section, your name and address or your question, and we will address it that way. You can also raise your hand on the raise hand function.
And Madam Chair, if you could just recognize me, would you like me to do that? I don't have a raise my hand button that I can locate.
It would be underneath if you click on participants. It should come up in the bottom right corner.
Okay, it, it comes and goes. All right. I will do that. Thank you.
All right. Okay, so. Okay. So let me talk about how we're going to proceed this evening. Tonight, we will review the material that was sent to us as part of the review that we have been taking place over the last several meetings. As part of the discussion, I'm going to be taking the temperature of members of the planning board when we get to certain points in the document that we're going to be working with. Second, Lauren is going to be Uh second, Lauren is going to be typing in real time when we make an agreed change in the text. So it's going to go a little bit um more slowly so that that's going to be able to happen to happen. Um but it will be a way for us to get a complete document and to um really get down to people's. Um deepest feelings about items. Uh the plant at the uh uh at the end of the discussion of the material, the planning board. Can um choose to vote to close the public hearing tonight. Uh deliberations can occur beyond close of the public hearing, but no new information may be submitted on the application at that time. So let me pause for questions. Alright, so with no questions, then let's move on. We're going to move.
This is Adam Brodsky, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I did raise my.
Oh, sorry, Adam, I didn't see it.
Virtual hand, and just so that the record is clear, I'm Adam Brodsky, I'm a. Land use and environmental attorney and I represent the applicant CHI Elm Street Realty LLC, and as you've recognized. We have here tonight Mr. McGoldrick, Mr. Lubitz and Mr. Cavanaro. I I want to thank you, the board and staff for sharing with us the draft decision. Uh great care was put into this, and I want to let you know that we, the applicant's team, have reviewed this in detail. We're actually in agreement with the majority of items in the draft decision. We do have obviously some concerns, and if it's at all helpful. Um we're prepared to go through those concerns to let you know what aspects cause us problems. Um and that may help focus the discussion, but in any way, I just want to let you know that, please, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. So Lauren, as we go section by section, is it alright if I stop and then ask the applicant? Section by section whether they have any comments?
I don't see a problem with proceeding that way.
Okay, so that's the way we're going to proceed then. Alright, and uh just to remind the public, the public comment uh comes at the end of the discussion of the planning board. Uh and they uh and the continuation of the hearing. So the way that we um I I'd like to call on Eve Tapper since she's been guiding us. Um on some of this uh from the procedural perspective. So Eve, as we go through the document, how does it work where Lauren is making changes? And how's the best way to facilitate this conversation that so it goes um quickly and clearly?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I think the best way to do it is to have uh Lauren share her screen with the document on it. Um and as you said, I I think if there, you know, you should go through it page line by line. And if board members have a particular uh issue or question about a particular line, then you, you know, or maybe page by page. So you open it up on each page and say, does anyone have any comments on this page if everyone's okay? I I think if that should also extend to uh Mr. Brodsky and the applicant and his team. In case we're on the page where they might have some issues. And then if there are no problems, then you move forward, if there are, then you discuss the issues. And when you have just decided as a board how you might like to change everything, Lauren will type it in. And everyone will on the screen, everyone will have a chance to look at it on the screen, um obviously with track changes so that we don't lose the original. Uh draft, and then if everyone's okay with it, then um move on. Then at the end of the night, once um all those track changes have been made or tomorrow morning. Uh Lauren can just accept all the changes that were agreed to by the board um moving forward. But if you do it page by page, then everyone can talk about their issues, that's making the assumption. Um that all the board members, in addition to the applicant and his and their team, have gone through it and know where their issues are. So that, you know, you can stop on the page and and not move forward until that page has been so quote unquote approved. By the board as is, and then you can move forward. I think it's very helpful to have uh Lauren be sharing the screen at that time. So that everyone can be reading it online, then the people who do not have a copy that might be participants as the public can see what the language says. Um and the changes can be made, so you you can even wordsmith, you know, it might not be a big issue change, but you want to change an if to a then or. Um and she can do all that in real time, does that make sense?
Yes, thank you, and thanks for explaining that to everyone. Um so uh as we do this, um I would like us to go slowly enough. So that it is possible for Lauren to do what she needs to do, but also so that people don't feel rushed. Trying to say something, because then we'll just have to repeat. So if you have a comment, I'm going to literally call on an individual, I'm going to let them finish what they have to say. And then I'm going to go to the next person, and I want everyone muted except the person who's speaking. Uh and you, I will get to you and I my eyes are glued to my panel. Um but I just want to be able to do this as efficiently and as clearly as possible. So with no further ado, is are there any other comments? Are there any other comments from the applicants?
Yep, I've got a comment.
Alright, hang on. Uh can, again, I've asked you to use your hand, use the hand on the computer, please Clark.
Well, I I have to use the old fashioned method because in the participant section of my um thing, all I can do is mute or unmute. Or rename, so in the circumstances where the the technology doesn't work, I'm going to use the old.
That's fine, that's fine, I didn't know that.
That makes two.
Uh okay, so hang on, let me just get a few, let me get a few names, is there anybody else besides Clark and Paul Grady that would like to speak in the introduction? Alright, I'm going to go to Clark Brewer first and then Paul Grady second, Clark Brewer.
So my comment was that I can't use the hand raise function, that was my comment, and I'm going to use the old fashioned method. If I have something to say.
Alright, thank you, um Paul Grady, I hope you can use it, can you use it?
No, I'm seconding Clark's uh statement.
Okay, then I need to watch for that, thank you, uh Eve Tapper, you have a question?
So no one has ever accused me of being very complete computer literate, but um if you pull up the panelists, it has your name. And when you, uh when if you're on your name, you can only mute or do more, but at the bottom, I think it says invite mute me and raise hand. If you push on that raise hand, it's not at your name, it's at the bottom of that piece of paper. So I I don't know if everyone else sees it that way. But uh anyway, just a just a thought.
Thank you.
Okay, um so Paul Grady, did you have a comment you wanted to make in addition to the technical question?
No, no, I'm good.
Alright, great, is everybody else okay? Alright, um so let's begin, Lauren, do you want to bring the text up on your screen?
Yes.
Uh and Lauren, as if if we um get on a page and it looks like we're going to have discussion. We'll leave the page up for a certain period of time, and then I think it would be useful if people can see each other talking. Uh so can you toggle back and forth without that being cumbersome, and do you think that's a good idea?
I can certainly toggle back and forth, we can do that.
Alright, so if you can bring up the full, can you bring up the full page of the first?
I'll just have to zoom out a little, so it's uh all visible.
So, okay, um. Alright, so this is basically the introduction to the. Discussion tonight, and uh has everybody had a chance to read this? Are there any comments on this page? With no further comments, um uh I'm going to, I'm not going to call for a roll call on this one. I'm just going to know that people didn't need to discuss it, so now we're moving to the second page. Here we have the general information about the the applicant engineering. And uh the zoning that is applied to this situation and then the proposal of the project. Does anybody have questions about, in particular, the current zoning and the proposal? Tom Callahan?
I'm just going to suggest for the interest of time to start on page six because the first six, first five pages is just all the stuff that was submitted. I don't think there's anything to discuss or vote on, so if we could just get to page six and get into the meat of it, we save some time.
Well, I want to make sure that there aren't issues in some of the details, so I will go quickly through them, but I appreciate what you're saying, thank you.
Madam Chair.
In turn, uh Lauren Lind?
I'm sorry to interrupt, you're going to find um find missing pieces of information, I I need to update that, so if that is the most up to date, those, some of those are um. They've been updated since or will be updated based on conversations, and I have an input date, so if. If the board is okay procedurally with that, we can certainly review that completed information when the time is appropriate, but I would um second uh Member Callahan's suggestion.
So you speak, there's one thing to speak about the list of all the things that have happened, there's another uh which is when we get to. Uh the bottom of page five and page six, so you're suggesting we should move to six and continue the conversation there?
Correct, I'll say that the this, the front page is a is essentially a cover sheet that addressed to the town clerk to let you know what the vote was and essentially what happened. Uh page two is general information about the application. Uh page three is where we begin referencing the record set of plans and scale last revision dates, what was incorporated there. And then um we have the applicant report submissions, the peer review, department and board committee comment submissions. And then we get to section two procedural history and background, so um with that noted, there will be revisions to include. The most up to date information and all the preceding sections that I just stated.
Alright, thank you for that. Um so here we are on page six at the top of the page, um and then um part two procedural history and background. Are there any comments, corrections? Alright, I don't see any hands, let's move on to the next page, page seven, we continue part two. And move into part three, is there any comment on the second part of part two? I don't see any comments, uh let's move to then part three findings. Are there any comments on uh the first page of findings? Alright, let's move on to page eight. Are there comments here? We have a description of the bylaws that apply. We have a description of the residential uh gross floor area of dwellings. Um we have some details about um uh chapter ninety-one, the site. And um and some attributes of the site, are there any comments on this page? Alright, thank you. Page nine, we continue the discussion under item three. Uh there's discussion of parking, there's discussion of the overlay district. Uh there's a discussion of the special permit. There is um. Uh a discussion of um our interactions with the historic commission, historical commission, are there any comments on this section? Um Adam Brodsky?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and hopefully you're seeing my hand electronic.
Missed missed the, yeah, I'm trying to keep three things going, it's a little bit hard, but.
I I understand.
Go back to, what page do you want to go back to?
We're on page nine with respect to the uh Harbor Village Business Overlay District Guidelines. I simply would remind the board that we did ask for two minor waivers to the design guidelines. This is not uh any other waiver, um that's actually reflected on the first sheet, the cover sheet of our most recent site plan. And it has to do uh with a screening for the loading zone at eighty-seven under six point six point one of the guidelines. And then the loading space at one twenty-four, which I believe is six point six point two. And I just remind the the board that we we do need a finding with respect to that those minor waivers.
Alright, um is there any discussion of this specific item by members of the board? Uh alright, Tom Callahan?
Well, wait later on in the conditions, we reference a whole lot of things that was in the Weston and Sampson letter from October. If they are to comply with, and was this addressed in that letter?
Can you speak up please, Tom?
I said later on, we in the conditions, we were referencing a Weston and Sampson letter from October. Was this particular issue and these particular waivers addressed in that letter? I don't I don't recall exactly. Because the condition is to comply with that Weston and Sampson letter. I don't recall specifically how far it went and dealt with screening.
Alright, Tom, what kind of information do you want right now from the applicant?
I don't I don't know, I'm not exactly, I'm sitting here tonight, not, it's not, um my memory isn't what what uh. Telling me what the waivers were requested and whether we have already dealt with them in the conditions or not.
Alright, so let me ask Adam Brodsky to to uh fill us in a little bit.
Uh thank you, Madam Chair, I I don't recall where in the peer review report it addressed these issues. You may recall that we had a discussion regarding screening for the loaded space at eighty-seven, which would create, I believe, a line of sight issue. And with respect to one twenty-four, we actually have the loading zone in front of the commercial space uh on the street. And and those were the requests for the waivers, um as as Mr. Callahan uh points out, there is a specific condition. And it's now, it's later on, obviously, in uh uh Roman numeral number four subsection two, item number eight. That says that the applicant will provide all service and loading areas as shown on the approved plans. Again, we had requested those minor waivers, so I just want to make sure that that we're addressing it. I I do have some other comments with respect to that section, but uh again, I I I can't specifically tell you. Where in the peer review report, but we have talked about these issues.
You you refresh my memory, are you asking us to waive screening altogether or just changing what's required?
I can read the the description, Mr. Callahan.
Let me ask, can I ask a question first, which is, does this pertain to changing the language where we are now? Does this discussion pertain to us changing the language on page nine or page eight?
Uh again, uh Madam Chair, these are your your findings, so on the previous page, you go through the zoning requirements and you make a finding. And so presumably you're making a finding with respect to the design guidelines, I defer to your discretion whether you want to put that in this section. Or you simply want to change uh uh you know, the condition that appears later. But we we do need to have that specifically called out somewhere and the decision is appropriate.
Okay, thank you, so Lauren, can you uh locate that um at this point? And and um underscored as something that we would come back to, to make sure we close the loop?
I can make a comment in the document that we address this request, um and then just to to speak to Tom's question from earlier. And I can't state specifically with reference to this section, but I know that there were some items addressed in the Weston and Sampson letter. That um were not a specific sort of black and white, yes, this meets the bylaw, it was up to the planning board to make the determination as to whether. Um that was more of an aesthetic decision, and I believe that this may have been one of those topics.
I I I'm I'm going to suggest that if we are going to deal with their waiver request, we deal with it later in the conditions. I think this language that's here on page nine is fine the way it is.
Alright, thank you, um I have uh Eve Tapper and then Adam Brodsky. And Tom, I think uh you ready to take your hand down? Okay, so Eve?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I I'm um I'm fine with the way that uh Mr. Callahan wants to do it. I just think that may perhaps what the applicant is asking is it says, the finding says that the project is consistent. perhaps what the applicant is asking is it says, the finding says that the project is consistent with the, with the guidelines. And in fact, if you're asking, they're asking for a waiver of something in the guidelines, does that have to be put in this language, uh, that it is consistent except for the waiver that is, is granted as part of this. I'm not an attorney, so I will leave it to the attorneys to discuss that. But that, I think, is perhaps an answer to your question as to whether or not looking at the conditions, uh, affects the language on, on page nine. That's why I bring it up.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Karis North, do you want to comment? Uh, Karis, you have your hand up. Are you interested in, uh, making a comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot to unmute myself. Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, we can deal with this the way Mr. Callahan suggested by putting the specific waiver in the conditions. Then we would just need to modify number five so that it says, the board finds that the project is consistent with the, with the village business district and the guidelines as adopted by the planning board, blah, 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 and as conditioned below. And that would take care of what we would need to do now in five, and then we can come back and deal with a specific waiver in the conditions.
All right. So let's give Lauren a chance to, uh, do that. And, uh, it looks like Lauren is finished. Uh, and Karis, are you finished as well?
I am. I will lower my hand.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Any other comments on page nine? No. All right. Let's move to page ten. Uh, here we are discussing the dwelling occupancy and the parking. Uh, and we are um, essentially describing the analysis that was done to demonstrate that, uh, peak parking demand of uses do not coincide and that the accumulated parking demand at any one time shall not exceed the total capacity of the facility. Let me ask if they have any comments. I have comments myself. All right. There's an editorial point in, uh, where it starts based on the technical data, one, two, three, four, five, six lines down. There are two that's at the end of the sentence. And I would like to have a little bit of clarification on this particular point because I want to really understand the notion of how we determine that there'll be no, uh, conflict with the use, um, that will put pressure on parking. Um, and let me give you my, my, uh, example of what I've been thinking about. So if there's a restaurant um, on the harbor side, then you're going to have all of the residential parking uh, under the building filled. And then the question becomes where will the public seek parking if they wish to use the restaurant? Or use anything after the hour of five or six P M. When the residents would presumably be back in their homes, uh, and potentially, um, parking a car. Because that's, what, what we're basically saying is we don't see a conflict. I'm asking how we understand there to be no conflict if we have an activity that takes place, um, in the evening after the residents are once again back in their, uh, uh, domiciles. Tom Callahan?
Well, uh, was that a question you were waiting for the applicant to?
I, I, I'm actually, I sort of opened it up and I was interested in seeing what other people felt.
I don't, I don't know where I suggested this, but I thought I suggested that issues about parking and particularly the use of the town parking lot. And I think, I think as a practical matter, you, you know, at night when the public at large is not coming down to that parking lot and parking to take a walk along the harbor. I think as a practical matter, you're going to find that users of the restaurant are going to park in the town parking lot. And they're members of the public. That's fine. I, I thought I might have suggested though that the rules that govern that, um, which also would include making sure residents don't park overnight in the town parking lot is something that in the easement and covenant documents that we're going to come up with um, should be dealt with there. Like, you know, because it's, it's tying in with the public's use of the public amenities space, the harbor walk, the use of the parking lot in off-peak hours or nighttime hours. I think that's maybe a better place for that document, for this, this issue to be dealt with. Because then that will be something that's binding, running with the land, et cetera, et cetera. I thought I had suggested that was the way to deal with this particular issue rather than get into specific conditions here.
All right. That's fine. I'm just raising the issue. Um, Clark Brewer and then George McGoldrick.
So, um, the parking count is based on retail space, not a restaurant. Um, so the developer doesn't anticipate, um, um, I would think, um, leasing that space out for a restaurant or a cafe that would have a higher parking count. And it probably would, um, make sense if they did want to put a restaurant in there to, um, you know, based on their, um, uh, providing, uh, their, their parking count on, on retail that, um, that they come back for a modification to the planning board if they wanted to put a restaurant in and, um, um, and, uh, find, uh, additional parking spots either on locusts or, uh, participating in the, in the town project where, where I, I really think there's a tremendous opportunity to create more parking around this site, uh, with the redesign of the, of the corridor and the intersections. Um, so that to the extent that the, um, the developer would, uh, participate in, um, the creation of those, I, I, I think that it, it could just be a modification down the road. So we'll have to assume that if they put nothing in there but retail, that they wouldn't come back for a modification. But if they wanted to change it to a use that has a higher parking requirement as, as indicated in our bylaws or in any, anywhere, anywhere else. Um, and, and I will say that, you know, that the Cove Street, if that disappears, there's, there's an ability to pick up a, a number of parking spots in that, in that western, um, western edge of the, uh, of the, of the curved area. I think there's also an opportunity to pick up onsite locusts, on, on locust, uh, spots along, uh, Margin Street to, um, in the, in the area heading towards the town dock. Um, but again, that would be predicated on a change of use to, uh, what, what has been discussed so far and what the parking count is based on.
All right. Since I raised this issue, I'd like to have a little bit of a discussion with you about that. If we don't make some statement that, uh, recognizes what you just discussed, what are the implications going forward? Because let me give you an example. Um, Lauren and I met with, uh, Jason Frederico and talked about the parking around the harbor separate from this project. And, uh, the discussion, it was impossible to pinpoint how much parking there actually was on the street, how much of it was legal. Uh, and, um, and so we have a, a big unknown. And while I really appreciate you saying that it is possible there, right now, we don't have any evidence, um, of that. We, we can't say there's twenty parking spaces on the street.
Well, well, I think we cross that bridge when we get to it. If, um, if the developer, um, in the development proposes nothing but retail for those spaces, then the parking count that they provided, um, is adequate for, and, and that's, um, um, and then if they get a great, uh, you know, a great restaurant tenant that really wants that space and, you know, frankly, I think that would be a great place to put a small-scale restaurant, uh, a diverse, um, uh, place with a water view and outdoor seating. Um, but I think that, I think the developer comes back for modification and finds the parking, um, that would meet the requirements of the bylaw at that time.
All right. Mr. McGoldrick?
That might be kicking the can down the road a bit. Um,
Does go that way.
I think you could, you could, um, make sure that, um, that the parking count, uh, in the parking count section, that it's based on, um, uh, the retail, that the, that the non-residential spaces are for retail with the retail parking count of one, uh, one space, uh, per three hundred, uh, square feet.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McGoldrick.
That would be a part of the condition.
All right. We'll come back to that. Mr. McGoldrick?
Madam Chair, thank you. Good evening. Uh, concur with both, uh, Mr. Callahan and Mr. Brewer in terms of, we, we have met the bylaw currently as it stands. But if two things do change in terms of the, the use of it, uh, then we certainly would be coming back. We agree that there is a lot of extra space that down there that is now wasted, that can be utilized for parking. And as we've committed, we're looking forward to the redesign, uh, certainly of the triangle area, and then whatever the Elm Street corridor does in order to create not only the view corridor and the link to downtown, but also additional parking. I, I will remind everybody that, that, you know, the uses that have been down there have been significantly much more, uh, parking demand with weddings and functions within the buildings already. And it has worked over the years, uh, with the existing parking. So we're actually adding more parking than what's there today.
All right. Are there any other comments about this section? Karis, you had your hand up for a minute. Do you want to say anything?
I'm all set. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So let's move on to page, um, eleven. Going to give you a little bit of a chance to make sure you know what we're looking at here. Uh, Mr. Lubitz?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to make sure that Attorney Brodsky was able to rejoin. He, uh, lost internet and I believe he's on here, but he's obviously leading discussion from our side. So, um, Adam, are you back on?
I don't see him in the lineup.
I, I think he's the phone number, the seven, eight, one.
Is it twenty-four hundred type?
Yeah, I believe so. And I just want to.
I don't, I don't see him.
He's carrying a phone. I gave him the ability to talk to us. Um, he doesn't have a camera capability, but I need him to unmute himself.
Okay, um, let me.
Does anyone know the trick on a phone? I think it's, it's star something.
Totally depends. I think it's star nine, Lauren.
It starts six or star nine?
Does he have the power to type something into the chat?
No, he's on a phone.
Okay.
Apology for this, obviously.
So why don't I go to Tom Callahan while, um, uh, Mr. Brodsky is trying to get connected. And if he can't get connected now, he'll try to get reconnected. And this will be an item that we just review. All right. So Tom Callahan?
I'm, I'm just looking at the two little bits.
And please look at your, your, your monitor so you can, we can hear you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the, I need to look at the document at the same time. I'm sorry. Um, the two little bits of missing information in, in the subparagraph D. I'm wondering if John Cavanaro knows off the top of his head what the structural coverage is. So we can plug that number in.
Can you please speak up?
Does Mr. Cavanaro know what the structural coverage is so that we can, off the top of his head, so we can plug that number into subsection D here?
Mr. Cavanaro?
Yes. Good evening. I'm sorry. I was, uh, looking, pulling up the plan, Mr. Callahan, at the same time, so.
Yeah, okay. I, I, I don't know.
Um, so you're asking for structural coverage, lot coverage, um, sixty-six point five percent.
That's it. And then further down, okay, Lauren, did you get that?
I'm sorry. Structural coverage. Let me repeat that. I, I apologize. So structural coverage, we have two on the north south, so one twenty-four is sixty percent. I'm sorry, eighty percent? Let, let me confirm the sixty percent at one twenty-four, six, zero.
Yeah.
For one twenty-four, six, two, for eighty-seven. So well below the eighty percent.
You get that, Lauren?
Sorry, just to confirm. I was multitasking. Maximal structural coverage is, this is where we are. Do you, can you see the document?
Yep.
Okay. So could, I'm sorry, John, could you repeat that, please?
Yes. So on one twenty-four, it is six, zero percent. And on eighty-seven, it's six, two percent.
Thank you.
Uh, following Tom's comment related to D, we two, we have two, um, blank spaces on item number three.
Yeah, I was, I was going to ask about that next. Um, at the beginning of the project, you showed us the existing taxes versus projected new taxes when it was a twenty-nine unit project. I don't know that we ever got the new tax figure in projected tax revenue for a twenty-three unit project. And I think Lauren asked you on, as early as Monday, if we were able to get it so we can plug in these two dollar numbers. The, the, the existing tax revenue should be the same number you gave us at the beginning of the project.
Yeah.
And, and I don't know if you did a recalculation yet of what the projected new tax revenue would be now that it's a twenty-three unit project.
So, Adam Chair.
Mr. Lubitz, do you want to comment?
Yes, uh, thank you. So I, I can, I, so the, the numbers are essentially the same. Um, we can get you a revised number, but it will be, um, in line with what you've seen. That was a incredibly conservative number that was included the first time around, but we will get you an updated number for this.
Okay. All right. I was just hoping if we have it tonight, but that's okay.
Um, okay. Thanks. Um, let's see. Mr. Lubitz, do you have more to say?
No, I'm sorry. I forgot to lower the hand.
No problem. And Tom, do you have more to say?
No, I lowered my hand.
That's okay. Just checking. Um, I think I saw Adam float in a little bit, and then I think he floated back out again. So, um, if we need to go back to this point, we will.
Uh, Madam Chair, this is Adam Brodsky. Hopefully you can hear me.
Yep.
We're trying to restore. Oh, thank you.
Um, do you wish to say something on this page?
No, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Let's move on. All right. Page twelve. Any comments? I have a comment. Clark Brewer?
Uh, yeah, on number three, um, there's a indication of signage and exterior lighting, uh, and excessive noise. I, I think that we're going to cover those in the, um, in the conditions. Um, but I just wanted to, uh, reiterate that we, we want to see any, any exterior lighting package, uh, any exterior signage, uh, package in that, um, any equipment that's going to be used, particularly HVAC, um, be, uh, uh, be submitted with the final revised site plan for approval.
All right. Is that your comment?
That's my comment.
Great. Thank you. Um, I just have a minor comment, which is at the bottom of number three where it mentions things like noise, vibration, light, dust, smoke. Could you please include hazardous materials? If I don't hear any, uh, let me ask Karis North. Karis, are you, you're muted right now.
I'm sorry. I forgot to unmute.
I'm sorry, I forgot to unmute myself again. The, the, these findings are the findings based on the, the specific language in the bylaw that has to be made in order to complete this process. And that doesn't include hazardous materials. You can add that as a condition later, but it, it doesn't, it's not, I don't think it fits in the findings.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Clark, do you have another comment? All right, thank you. All right, let's move on to the next page, page 13. Nobody has any comments here. I think there's an editorial issue in one in the first paragraph, and it says wise, and it should say otherwise. But I, I'm not sure, I can't, I just have the note, I can't find the actual point in the text. And then, as you know, you can see that at the second paragraph, there's a break in the paragraph as the paragraph begins as noted above.
I'll fix that one eventually.
Okay, so page 13, no comments. Let's move on. Page 14? Mr. Cavanaro?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the 1, 2, 3, the third paragraph down, this makes reference to, "The project will create increased traffic at what is now a less-than-desirable intersection design, as noted by the town's consultants, Weston Sampson." I just, that was surprising to see because I don't recall them making that claim. And I just refer the board back to Van Assa's traffic report, where they made clear, and, and their report was prepared when we originally had 29 units proposed, which is now, the project has been reduced to 23. But in their summary was essentially that after accounting for trips generated by the existing use that occupies 124 Elm Street, that will be removed to accommodate the development, the project is expected to generate approximately 170 fewer vehicle trips on an average weekday, 144 fewer trips on a Saturday, eight fewer trips during the weekday morning peak hour, 12 additional trips during the weekday evening peak hour, and 12 fewer trips during the Saturday midday peak hour. Additionally, they, they made reference to the safety of the intersections in the, in the vicinity. They say, "No apparent safety deficiencies were noted with respect to the motor vehicle crash history at the study area intersections, with all of the intersections found to have motor vehicle crash rates that were below the mass DOT average crash rates for similar intersections." So I, I just wanted to make note in the findings that the evidence that was presented by the applicant's professional traffic engineer did not corroborate what was noted in this paragraph, nor do I recall Weston and Sampson raising this in their review, as this was a, a closed item in their last memo.
So, Mr. Cavanaro, I'd like to raise a couple of issues here. So I, Lauren and I met with Jason Frederico when we were talking about the Elm Street corridor and the intersection. And he left me with the impression that that's a complicated intersection. And when we go to modify it, a lot of things are going to be moving parts. Right now, how people drive there is they, if you have a boat, people swing into that intersection and, as they attempt to go to the harbor to launch their boat. And so Jason suggested that the level of complexity for the redesign of that, of that intersection was just something we don't know, and we don't have the analysis of the intersection to really be able to say whether or not it is going to be in the future functional when it gets changed. So I think that, that's just my view of, of the situation based on the conversations that we had.
Okay, I appreciate that. However, that appears to be referencing the existing conditions out there versus what this finding articulates. So I just wanted to be clear on the, the finding itself, just so that we're on the same page.
So what would you suggest be changed?
I don't think that paragraph is accurate, based on the evidence that's been presented or Weston and Sampson's review.
All right, thank you for that. Tom Callahan?
I would suggest just eliminating the first sentence. The rest of it is necessary for us to find that the project is going to have an impact on the intersection as basis for conditioning and participation in its redesign. So I'm comfortable with leaving the first paragraph, first sentence out, based on what John has said tonight, not the rest of it.
All right, thank you. Paul Coleri?
I think if you just add in the word "not," additionally, the project will not create increased traffic. I think if we just submitted the word "not" in there, it would be fine, and you could leave the sentence.
Well, that won't do it.
All right, what are we going to do here?
Take it out. Take the first sentence out.
So take the first sentence out. Does everybody agree to that? Let me first go to Mr. McGoldrick.
We're fine with that change, as Mr. Callahan suggested.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have comments here? All right. Then we have down at number four, a, two points of which information is required. Do we have that now?
Madam Chair, it's Lauren Lind. I don't, I would have to go back into our files and specifically reference which letter of this is stating. I can revise that.
All right, then we don't have to fill it in now. Charis North?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just going to say, I would work with Lauren to find that because I'm the one who, who put in that comment. So we'll, we'll, we'll get that, we'll get that figured out.
All right, thank you. All right, any other comments for this page? All right, let's move on. Page 15?
Madam Chair, this is Adam Brodsky. May I speak, please?
You may, yes.
Thank you. We, we have one proposed change in one word in the last paragraph of page 15 in the first sentence. The first sentence reads, "Thus as conditioned below, the board finds that the applicant's proposal to develop the required number of units off-site." And we suggest then, instead of using the word "develop," we use the word "create" when creating inclusionary housing. Development has a connotation that we're going to start from the ground up and develop a new site. The desire is obviously to create affordable housing quickly. And so we want to create affordable housing ideally by converting existing units. So perhaps it's a semantic issue, but we respectfully suggest that the word "develop" be deleted and the word "create" be substituted.
All right, thank you for that. Is there any comment from the board about this? I've got a little hand up there. Okay, now Clark Brewer?
Yeah, I guess I, I would say to give them the flexibility that they're requiring, that they're requesting, to change that to create or develop so that they have that understood as an option. And I would also say in the second line, the required number of units off-site, it could be the required number of units or more off-site.
All right.
The creation of affordable, affordable units are units that currently aren't affordable and making them affordable under the, the requirements of DHCD. And, and you, you could just change it, an existing unit to, from one to the other, or you could create a new one. But I, but I think being able to create and not necessarily develop, but leaving that option open definitely makes sense.
All right, thank you. Adam, then Mr. McGoldrick, and then Eve?
Madam Chair, we'd appreciate any flexibility. So I think, subject to Mr. McGoldrick's comments, create or develop would be helpful. I, I'm not certain if it provides clarity the number of units or more. I, I don't think that that provides clarity in this context. I'll defer to Mr. McGoldrick.
All right, Mr. McGoldrick?
So we're fine with create or develop? I'm, I'm a little confused as to the next suggestion. Where is, Mr. Brewer suggested changing something else?
On the second line?
Of that paragraph?
Yeah. The required number of units off-site. So we have a required number of units of three, and I wouldn't want to limit you to creating more than, than the, the three units. Because I think, you know, for example, if the, if the average size unit that you have in your development is 2,000 square feet, and you just happen to have a potential for, for turning six units of 1,000 square feet apiece, that might be sort of an equal, but a, a larger number of units. You understand what I mean?
All right, so Mr. McGoldrick, is that all right with you?
Yes.
Is there any way that you want to see that language modified beyond what Clark is suggesting?
Can I just look at what Lauren's going to put in there?
I have a question here. Do we prefer to word this, create or develop the required number of units off-site or more, or I would suggest to create or develop at the minimum the required, I guess that doesn't help?
Yeah, that, that, that works. At minimum, the required number of units. And again, I think, I think there's, there may be an opportunity to make smaller units, but more of them, so that it's more or less an equal to what you'd be creating on, onsite. And, and, and hopefully that would also work with the DHCD requirements of you're creating similar size and units to your development.
Okay, so do you want it to read the minimum, the required number of units or more offsite? Do you want or more in there? That was said at one point?
I think at the minimum, the required number of units offsite. Maybe, maybe you need a comma.
Okay. Anybody have any other comments on this?
I don't think the comma changes the, the meaning or.
All right, I don't see anybody else with comments. All right, page 16? I, I have a comment, which is, in the inclusionary zoning discussion at the state level, they use language that includes some specificity about the quality of the units. And there's language that was circulated in an analysis for three cities in Massachusetts that actually went on to describe that comparable characteristics. And we don't have anything that really specifies that. And I'm, I certainly would think that the developer is going to build beautiful things, whatever they are. But do we want to have language that makes it clear that these are to be quality units that reflect a standard akin to what we would see with constraints on, at the harbor site itself? Clark Brewer?
Well, I think that your point is valid, and DHC does have that as a requirement that they be of the similar quality. But the square footage issue and the number may be something that all, all falls into whatever, whatever the applicant can come up with to satisfy this requirement. Again, there may be more units of, of smaller size and slightly lesser quality that is acceptable to DHCD and to the planning board. But I think whatever it is that's done, that the planning board should be able to do, do a final pass and review and approve what, what the developer applicant is, finally comes up with, with, for a compromise.
All right, I have three comments. I don't know what the order is, so I'm going to go just down the list. Charis North?
Thank you, Madam Chair. That language about developing units of similar quality and size is typically used when you're talking about a multi-unit development and the units are in the same building, so that there's no visible way to distinguish between the affordable units and the market rate unit. So there's no stigma attached to the affordable units, and nobody can tell what they are. So that doesn't directly apply here. I do believe that in the conditions you ask for, or you could condition, you know, that there's some, you know, minimum standard that the, that the developer has to meet in terms of the quality of the units. But, you know, I think Mr. Brewer addressed that in a, in a relevant way in his prior comments. So I just wanted to give you that context.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McGoldrick?
Madam Chair, I agree with what both Mr. Brewer and Charis North had just talked about. As you know, we have been talking to the Affordable Housing Trust for quite some time to try to come up with the best solutions. And there are a couple of opportunities out there that we will come back and present to you. Since the board has the ability to approve what we're going to do, I would, I would hopefully leave us the most flexibility and the board not get tied in later down the road if we come up with a project that for some reason doesn't hit a particular language within this document. So the more flexibility to get us the quickest affordable housing and the biggest number for the town, which is the two criteria that the Affordable Housing Trust and Steering Committee have listed, would be best for the, for the whole project in the town.
All right, thank you for that. Mr. Callahan?
I wanted to just say what Charis already had said, that requirement is tied in when it's in the same building. And I think realistically, we, we can't expect that what might be built offsite is going to be the same quote unquote quality of, of what's going to be built inside this project, which I presume are going to sell for big bucks. So I, I, I think, you know, we make the conditions later on that whatever is proposed for offsite has to come back before us. And I think Mr. McGoldrick knows that if he came back to us with proposals for three, you know, 300 foot, 300 square foot studios somewhere in town, we're going to have a problem with that. I think as long as, as they come into something comparable in size and utility to somebody living there, also what will be built in the project will be fine. But I think we should be letting, at this point, I think all we can do is let them have the flexibility to come up with a proposed offsite.
All right, thank you. Clark Brewer?
I, I think that the applicant, George McGoldrick's comments are, are relevant, that providing flexibility at this point for review and approval down the road is a completely appropriate way of, of dealing with this one.
Thank you. Let's move on to page 17. Let me just say that there is a typographical error in number four, the, the third line from the bottom of four, where it says that will full compliance. I think it must be expected to say that will be in full compliance. I'm not sure, but it's an editorial comment. Are there comments about, Mr. Brodsky?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm obviously back from wherever I was. With respect to Roman numeral number four, Roman numeral number one, paragraph number two, "In the event of development sale." In the event of development sale or transfer, the owner record and principles must remain throughout the project completion to issues of certificate of occupancy. I believe we discussed that and the consensus was that that was not enforceable. And we had requested that that be removed, uh, from the prior draft.
All right, Mr. Callahan?
I, 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 before Adam spoke, I wanted to go back to your comment about paragraph four on that page. The, the typo is that the word will.
Can you please, it's, it's real hard to hear you, Tom.
The typo is that the word will should be the word with, W I T H.
All right. Thank you. Um, uh, let's go back to the point that Mr. Brodsky raised, which is, it, um, it appears, uh, that he is indicating that we can't really make this statement. And, um, I'd like to see what, uh, Karis North has to say about this before we, uh, exit out.
Yep. I've just read the condition now. Yeah, I, 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 I agree. I think that you're, if, yeah, I, I don't think it's enforceable, so it should come out.
And if it's in, you know, some kind of boilerplate general conditions we have for all projects, it should be out of law. It's not enforceable in any context.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that.
All right. Uh, so Tom, is, is that satisfying you?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Clark Brewer?
The only thing I would say about this point is that if i- it could be intentional. I, I know this, this is a condition. Um, um, but it could be condi- uh, intentional that, um, that, um, the, that the principles, um, that we're seeing here, and we expect to see through, throughout the project, um, that they be, um, that they be retained, um, by whoever the new owner is. If possible for, um, a consistency, um, in communications with the planning board and, um, uh, in, in all others relative, relative to the project. Uh, not an absolute requirement, but a, uh, um, um, but a, but a goal, so that if the project is flipped, that, um, these guys who, you know, I think, George has said, we've been talking about the project and the zoning for years. And, um, I think it would be a benefit to the project and a benefit to the town and the planning board. Um, if, um, that, tha- that the team stay in place or be, uh, retained to, to aid in communications.
It's unrealistic. It'll never happen.
Right. Okay. So it sounds as if, uh, we appreciate the, the intent, but from a standpoint of codification, we really can't include that. So I'm gonna request that that be taken out. Um, I noticed Lauren that you have eliminated number four, inspection regime. Can you explain that?
I'm sorry. I had the wrong number four, I believe.
You mean in that location?
Yes. I, I'm just having difficulty following at this point. Is this not the section you meant to take out?
No.
No, it's under fo- it's under Roman numeral four, uh, item number two.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Uh, let me see. I've got, uh, Paul Collieri and then Eve Tapper.
No, I was just gonna let Lauren know that we were talking about a different section and that was not what was to be struck. That's all.
All right. Good eye. Uh, Eve?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think on the point of taking out number two, um, I just wanted to remind the board that if, when, if this is approved, it will have to be, um, put at the registry of deeds and will run with the land regardless of who owns it. So that the conditions will have to continue. If the, the applicant's team isn't the same, when it's being built, it still will have to go by the site plan that's approved here. So, um, it may not be the same people, uh, if that's the case. But it, it will, you can enforce that it looks the same, um, as is approved. So you're essentially getting what you're, what you're aiming at. Um, whether or not you, you can enforce number two, but you can enforce that it look like it, uh, the plan that you approved. If that's any help.
Uh, that is helpful. Thank you. Um, Tom Callahan?
You're mute.
I got nothing more. I'm low in my hands. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Um, page 18. Are there any comments on this section? Do we, um, this is my comment. Do we have, uh, anywhere a specification when, when we use the term substantial? What that means, because in number nine, um, we say no substantial changes shall be made to the FRPS without the planning board approval. Then we go back and we say minor changes in the plans caused by field conditions permitted, are permitted, but substantial changes. So do we have a definition for that and do we need it?
Well, Amy, generally, we use major modifications or minor modifications, uh, in our language, uh, for special permits and site plan, uh, reviews. So maybe we wanna, um, um, conform that, uh, language to that language.
Um, all right. Thank you for that. Karis North?
We're just gonna say that it's, uh, not defined, but there is certainly case law that provides examples of what, uh, major and minor modifications are.
All right. Thank you. But from the standpoint of, um, consistency of the document and related to the practices that we currently undertake, um, Clark's recommendation would be to change the language to be ma- to use major and minor um, in the document overall is, what does Lauren think about that?
The only change would be is the word substantial would be major.
Ri- right. And the, the question is, is it, it, it may be all over the text. Do we want to have a uniform one? If so, should we just say, uh, that a general change will be made to use this language?
Fine with me.
It's easy enough to do for my editing, so I can do that.
Great. Thank you. Page 19.
No, I, I have a comment on the top or a question about.
Uh, okay. So are you back on page 18?
Yeah, the top part of section.
All right.
Of the page, section three, the end. It says, prior to final endorsement by the board, the town clerk shall certify that the 20 days have lap- elapsed and no appeal has been filed. So when, when it says prior to final endorsement by the board, does that mean we don't vote on it until the, the 20 days? Or, or does that mean we don't, uh, review final revised site plans and other things? The final endorsement, is that final revised site plan? What is that exactly?
Um, uh, Karis North?
Yeah, I, I, I haven't seen that language before. It's just typically that the town clerks will certify that 20 days have elapsed and no appeal has filed. I'm not sure what that first clause is. Um, but certainly, um, you, you wouldn't probably, uh, uh, approve final plans until after the appeal period had run.
Okay, so we are talking about final revised site plans, um, to, to endorse those after we've done an approval or a vote or whatever is coming.
You have to vote the site, you have to vote and issue the permit before it gets filed with the town clerk and before the appeal period starts to run.
So what is this prior to final endorsement by the board?
I don't know. I, like I said, I don't think it's necessary. I think you can strike that phrase unless, unless there's some reason that Lauren or Eve thinks it needs to be in there.
Okay. Well, if it's an error or something like that, I, I, you know, um, it, it just doesn't, doesn't, I don't think it means anything.
I, I agree with you.
Clark, can you please reiterate where that, that is again?
It's at the top of page.
First line.
Top of, top of page 18?
Yeah, other, other page.
Off of page 18, the way, the sentence that starts prior to final endorsement, take that whole sentence out.
Thank you.
Not the whole sentence, just the first clause.
The second part of it is just.
Well, yeah, that's fine.
You have it right.
Yep, agreed.
Well, actually, isn't it that the, that the, um, that the approval of the board, um, isn't final until the town clerk has certified that 20 days has elapsed?
No.
All right. Wait, wait, wait. Okay. Now, um, wait, wait, Clark. Tom, would you speak, please?
I don't believe that that is correct. We vote, we vote tonight and that's our approval, period. Then, then somebody in the outside world chooses if they want to appeal or not. If there's no appeal, then the project moves forward.
But the, note acknowledges that, um, there's a 20-day appeal period.
That's, that's stated in state law. You don't need us to say that.
Okay. Eve Tapper?
I, um, I don't, I'm not gonna necessarily comment on that particular language, but I'm, I'm actually also looking to see, is there a section somewhere that I missed that says after the 20-day appeal period, that the decision must be recorded at the registry before anything else can happen? I, I don't see that unless it's somewhere else and I just missed it. That's, that's usually what I see in the conditions, um, that whatever is finally approved and the appeal period has happened, then it gets filed. So maybe that's what that prior to final endorsement was supposed to mean. Um, but I didn't see it. Maybe it's somewhere and I just didn't see it.
Um, i- i- in this particular case, can we, uh, have Lauren? Do we have to have this actually right now, correct? Or can we fix this by looking at where it was derived and what it is applied to? Within, outside of this meeting?
It's, Amy, it's, the, the idea that there's some final endorsement after the 20 days is an incorrect statement of the law. Let's not debate it. Take it out.
Madam Chair, I, I agree with that. I'm just wondering where it says that you actually register it, that's recorded at the.
No, there, there's no condition that says recording in the registry of deeds in the decision.
Should there be?
Okay.
So Lauren, you should take out, I agree, you should take out the, you should take out the entire sentence. My apologies for just strike what I said and take out the whole sentence.
Okay, so the prior to final dot, dot, dot is removed. All right. Um, uh, Tom Callahan?
Nothing. I've, I've said my piece.
Okay. Clark Brewer?
Uh, you know, I'm just reading the Mass General Law, uh, uh, in the section and I, um, I'm, I'm not finding where this locks in. So I think removal is the, is the wisest thing to do here. The, the intent is that you, you know, that there's an appeal period. But, um, you know, maybe, uh, Karis, I don't know if you could take a quick look, uh, while we're doing other things or, um, see if it's, if it's irrelevant, then it should just go.
All right. Tom Callahan?
I'm just gonna suggest that in this particular subsection, Roman numeral one, on page 19, we'll add a condition, a new condition at the end of this.
Oh, we're not on page 19 yet. We're still on page eight.
I'm, I'm suggesting a solution to this issue of 20 days and recording and everything, that at the end of this section, we just add a condition that says that after the appeal period has run, this decision will be recorded at the north of registry of deeds.
So would you call that item number foot 15 under section?
Well, it's, the whole thing's being renumbered, so it's probably gonna be the new item 14. Because we deleted item two, so, uh, I'll, I'll, in the chat, I'm going to write it up right now, so.
All right. Great. Thank you very much. All right. Any other comments on page 18? No. Now let's move on.
Just the, 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 um, at the top again, I'm sorry. Um, chapter 40A, section 17, i- it seems to be, um, the, the, um, the Board of Appeals. Yeah, I'm not sure if this is the right, uh, MGL reference. So just ask counsel to, to double check that, please.
All right. Do you have that, Lauren?
No, seven, 17, I believe, is the section that deals with appeals to the court.
That's correct.
I believe it would be the correct reference.
Okay.
All right. I've got, uh, two comments, one from Ted Lubitz and then Eve Tapper.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, uh, just monitoring the panelists and attendees and it looks like one of the planning board members is now an attendee, uh, Mr. Potter. So I don't know if he needs to be brought back in, but.
Oh, thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Ted. I just promoted him again.
All right, Eve Tapper?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that the, um, what, whatever Mr. Callahan is writing in the chat for, uh, the condition of recording should actually go, um, at the end of that first section, because then afterwards, it says the following conditions shall be met prior to the commencement of site work. Each one of the ones after that is at a certain timeline, and this should be immediately after the 20-day appeal period. Um, it needs to be recorded before they can do anything. Uh, so the, putting it at the end puts it after the first certificate of occupancy, which is not where we want to put it.
Okay, Eve, are you suggesting the whole section three? Under, I, uh, Roman numeral one to be, to the bottom or just?
No, uh, Mr. Callahan said he was gonna try to write.
I, I, I hear what she says, whatever.
All right.
Wait, you, so whatever Mr. Callahan put in the chat that he wants about the requirement that it be recorded, I just think it needs to go under what is, what is, number, right where she has the cursor, exactly right.
All right.
Before, rather than at the very bottom.
All right. Great. Okay. And, um, Tom, do you want to say something up further?
No, we're just gonna be able to write.
All right. Thank you. Let's move on to page 19. Um, uh, on this page, under building and site specifications, do I have, i- is the number 23 correct? I don't know why I marked it. It's down under item three, under Roman numeral two.
So 23 is correct, but the number 19 is not correct.
Okay. Uh, what should the nine number be?
Should be 10.
Okay. So that would be under Roman numeral two, building and site specifications. Item number three. There we go. So this 19 right there needs to be 10. All right. Uh, other comments? Yes, two. Uh, um, are, I, top, um, three. So, uh, Mr. Brodsky?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I, I'd like to speak to item number 14, which requires prior to the issuance of any certificate of occupancy, two types of as-built plans. And you'll remember of our conversation and concerns the last time we discussed this issue. We have no issue whatsoever with providing, uh, as-built site plan as requested by the board, uh, stamped and certified by a professional land surveyor. Um, that's standard operating procedure. But we do have concerns regarding the last sentence. This is buildings, building as-built shall be stamped by a registered architect. Uh, you may recall that, uh, Mr. Lubitz spoke to this issue. Building as-bills are a very complicated, uh, exercise, costing potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars. We have an alternative suggestion to get you, I think, where you want to go. But before I suggest that, I will remind the, the board that this is controlled construction. There will be affidavits submitted by our professionals throughout the, uh, construction process. So this is gonna be very different than a single-family home construction site. But we do recognize that the board has a bad taste in its mouth regarding building height as a result of another project in town. So we think it would be perfectly appropriate to provide an, an as-built plan confirming the building height, which would typically be done by a professional land surveyor as opposed to a registered architect. And so we suggest as an alternative, this concept of building as-bills. Again, it's going to be prohibitively expensive. Again, it's going to be prohibitively expensive to come up with as-bill plans that identify every door, every door frame, every window frame, every roof feature, uh, uh, and things of that sort. So our proposal is to, uh, is to delete the last sentence and then to, uh, add in as part of the as-bill site plans, uh, a plan which would confirm the building height. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I have two other people wishing to speak, Clark Brewer, then Tom Callahan.
On the top of the page, number 12, uh, during construction section. Um, I, I probably should have caught this before. I thought that, uh, building, uh, construction period for our town was 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Um, and this says to 6:00 PM. Um, and then it says except with written leave of the billing inspector. I, I, written leave, the word leave doesn't seem like the right word. How about written permission or approval?
Um, so can we verify that? Because, uh, I got a big project going on right in my neighborhood and they stop um, certainly at six or before, and I, I will say my neighbors have commented that uh, i- it's very hard with kids and families and things to have, uh, construction activities going on past 6 o'clock. So I'd like to see that checked.
Jen may know, uh, what that is just off the top of her head, but, um, it should be in the general bylaws. Uh, or, uh, something from the billing department that is general in, uh, nature to, uh, people doing projects.
No. If you'd like, I do know, if you'd like me to address that. It's a general bylaw, actually, so the, and it's, uh, seven to seven.
That's what I thought.
Um, and, um.
And can we change the word leave to permission or approval?
Good to meet.
All right, so are we okay with that, number 12?
Madam Chair.
Uh, Lauren?
I'm sorry, before we move on too far, um, Adam Brodsky had made a comment about uh, number 13 down here. I just, I missed the, I struck the language, but I missed the language of the suggestion.
Okay, so let's go back, and I think he was actually speaking about item 14.
That, that's correct, Madam Chair. It's item number 14. I was suggesting deleting the last sentence, building as-bills shall be stamped by a registered architect, and suggested building into the requirements, so it would be one set of as-bill plans, including location, size, signage, and building height. And that would be stamped and certified by a professional land surveyor.
Does that read correctly?
Yes, it does. Um, all right, Tom Callahan?
Uh, I wanted to comment on Adam's change. It's not just the building height that had us concerned from the other project, but it's, at the other project, the FARs were outceding. I suppose if the inspection regime that we set out in section nine is followed to the letter, it won't be a problem, but, uh, I'm not trying to s- I'm not trying to, uh, impose an extraordinary and unneeded expense, but um, just, just to correct what you said, that there's two aspects of the building that the other project bothers us about. And I guess I would ask, Clark, as an architect, is that condition as it was written, unreasonable?
Yes, um, although I, I can say that, uh, a, a type of as-built could be, um, could be provided to the board for review, that would be the, the building permit drawings, those, 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 uh, drawings that are used uh, to obtain a building permit with, um, with the, um, with any major deviations, uh, noted. And perhaps a, a letter from the, the architect that says it. Um, that the, the, I mean, he'd do this probably as a part of the construction control affidavit, but saying, um, the project as completed, um, meets the zoning, um, uh, and building code requirements. I think that would be pretty straightforward and, and we wouldn't have to worry about every door frame and whether the, we, we changed to six, eight doors from, from seven-foot O doors into the bathrooms and, and in three of the units.
I mean, then I'm, I'm good with the change, and I, again, I'll make the comment that at the earlier bit that, um, these conditions for, the entire section one comes from some general boilerplate conditions we use, uh, apparently on other projects, so we just, the changes we were making here, we need to make, you know, just for our own internal purposes, we, we need to make that for every time we use these conditions.
Okay, I have two comments, uh, Eric Potter and then Adam Brodsky.
First would be, uh, that I, I think it's, you, you have to rely upon the, uh, the, the architects and engineers to stamp off on the plans. That they're going to be, uh, going off of existing zoning bylaws if there's concerns about heights and how those are measured, uh, that's a different issue. I think if they're in compliance with the, what's required of the town, with, with submitting, uh, stamped plans that say that these buildings are in compliance with the current zoning bylaws. Uh, I think that has to be sufficient, otherwise, you know, i- i- it's, it's a slippery slope there. And I think that, uh, what was the other, there was another, uh, number nine, I think it was, Lauren? I believe it was.
The only other comment on this page was under number three, where we changed numbers in, uh, number three. 19 is specified originally and we made it 10.
Yeah, so number 11 right there, why would it? Why would we restrict their construction time? I- i- is it until, until 7:00 PM?
It, we're not, we're not, we've changed it to the, what the town bylaw says.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Um, all right, Mr. Brodsky?
Madam Chair, that solution is acceptable to us. Thank you with respect to 14. And at the appropriate time, I have two additional comments with respect to Roman numeral number two at the appropriate time. I don't know whether you want me to speak to those now?
Uh, if it's on this page, that will be, um, appropriate.
Excellent, thank you. Um, it's a, a, a language change with respect to number seven, and I just wanted to say, you'll, you'll note that all of these specifications are tied to the final revised, uh, s- site plan set, the FRSP. Um, uh, except for seven, a square footage of individual units and FER for all buildings shall be as set forth on the approved plans. My only suggestion is that to be consistent, it should be the FR S, uh, FRPS, excuse me, FRPS plan set in number seven. So I delete the words approve plans and just insert FRPS. And then number eight is the loading issue that I mentioned earlier on, where we are, uh, we, we have no problem with the language, uh, provided that it also recognizes the grant of the two limited waivers that we're asking. And so, uh, I, I can propose some, some, some language, but, um, this may be the appropriate place, uh, I think Mr. Callahan suggested, to address those two issues.
Yeah, what are, what are the waivers? I just refreshed my memory, if you don't mind.
Yes, and, and again, it's a waiver requested from section 6.6.1 of the design guidelines and 6.6.2. Um, the temporary loading space proposed at 87 Elm Street is not screened, and the designated loading space at 124 Elm Street is located adjacent to Margin Street. And so there are design guidelines, uh, respect to loading areas, and for all those reasons we discussed, those two do not comply. Uh, you, uh, you are allowed to grant waivers under the design guidelines, and we had requested that, uh, thought it was a done deal. And I was just, uh, pointing out that that particular waiver wasn't, uh, in this decision.
All right, um, thank you for that, and, uh, let's, uh, get the language correct so that it works for Lauren.
So, well, well, wait a minute, it might not be in there because maybe whoever drafted this didn't agree. So is there going to be some disposal area that's not screened at all? Is that what you're suggesting?
No, I believe, and I'll ask John to, to jump in. John?
No, it's not a disposal area, it's the loading area for a loading vehicle.
Okay.
So the loading space one is behind the building at 87 Elm, which is virtually screened by the James Brook and the open space behind that building, and the space on 124 is actually adjacent to Margin Street on our property, so there's, it's, it's adjacent to the sidewalk, so it's located, you know, close to the retail entrance, so that's easy on and off.
I don't, I don't necessarily have a problem with that one. Is the one at 87 going to be visible to, to residents along Elm Street or Summer Street?
No, the, it's, it's tucked in the back of the building, so the building blocks any view from Elm Street. So you won't see it from Elm Street.
You're sitting in this, you're sitting in this backyard or your back deck on Summer Street, you're going to see it?
I suppose you could see it from, you know, the properties on Summer Street, but we're talking about a a very infrequent situation.
I'm, I'm, I'm just asking so that we're very clear, so the board is very clear if they're going to vote on the waiver to, to to, uh, know specifically what it is you're leaving. I don't, I don't personally have a problem with the one on 124.
All right, so, um, I have Eric Potter and then Clark Brewer, and then Adam Brodsky. So Eric, Clark, Adam.
My head's down, I'm sorry, I, I did, I didn't know you had to remove it when you were done.
Yes, you do. Thank you. Clark?
Now, in this section, uh, in, under number one, it says, uh, in the second sentence, roofs shall be black or dark gray in color. The building shall be white, neutral, or historic colonial era color. I don't think we've ever talked about that, and, and those, uh, conclusions, those conditions are not compatible with the renderings that we got, which are kind of all in the beige-brown family. Not that I'm a big fan of beige-brown, but don't we have another section where we deal with, um, having them, uh, submit, um, um, you know, final selected materials for the exterior? I'm just wondering, is, it's, it's overly prescriptive, and it certainly isn't the intent that's, that's shown on the, um, elevations or the renderings. Again, number one, second sentence.
Well, we've been carrying, the building shall ha- be white, neutral, or historic colonial era hue all the way along. And I think we also specified the dark color of the roof, so if we want to change that, what would you recommend?
Who said something about the roof?
Uh, I'm saying that, that we've been carrying these two sentences for a while in the document, and I'm asking if you want to change them. Do you want to eliminate them? You want to change the colors that they're specifying?
I, I don't, they're not specifying these. Um, I don't know where they came from. If I'm just noticing it for the first time, I apologize, but, um, I don't think we want to see a big black roof up there, but, um, uh, wha- what do I know? I'm just an architect, right? Um, I think that there's someplace, uh, further down in the conditions where they're going to submit, uh, the exterior materials. So I, I would suggest that, um, we, uh, put, put, we give the developer some flexibility to have their architectural team pick the, the best colors for the, for the project and, um, uh, and then we get a chance to take a look at it somewhere down the road.
So Lauren, why don't you, um, just mark this, and then when we get down to the other section where we're discussing the, the materials for the building, w- we just know that we will come back and eliminate this?
It's, um, I, if I could just flag, it's actually right here in, uh, 12 on the screen on page 20. Um, some of the specifications are, are requested to come back to the planning board here.
Okay, so then, then you could remove the sentence that goes roof shall be and the building shall be, you can remove those two sentences.
Well, 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 no, not necessarily. They're not inconsistent, uh, to have both things in there. I mean, the intent of condition number one is to you know, have a New England-style looking building, which is what they've shown us. Um, with New England typical colonial colors and just not come in with something garish and out of character, which I don't expect this group to do, but if, you know, a, a future developer took over this project, we don't know. I, I don't, I don't see the two as inconsistent. They, they have to come back with some more specifics in the condition 12. But I think we should guide them, and for what it's worth, I consider beige to be a neutral color, so beige is okay with that.
Okay, uh, you know, point taken, um, but the sentence about the roof color conflicts with what's shown on their photo depictions. So, um, I mean, the building shall be white or neutral or historic, uh, you could leave that part. I just say, um, um.
How about just complementary colors?
Well, I thought they were.
Take it out and say it should be shown as, in, in the photo depictions, um, and as, and as, uh, submitted for review. But, but I think black and dark gray would be a mistake as a requirement.
Why? Isn't that what they proposed, is a dark roof?
No, I haven't seen black, no, not, 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 nowhere in, in the elevations or in the renderings, is there a black roof?
All right.
Are there other colors I'm missing for roofs?
Um, I, I have, uh, Eric Potter, I'm sorry.
The renderings.
Yeah, all right, that's fine. I'm fine with that. I'm not going to argue what, um, I know Amy's getting to Eric. I'm interested in what Eric's proposing as a change to condition.
I'm actually not proposing a change, not to get in the way of moving the slides, but just, but Tom, did you create all this?
You did, what?
Did you create all these building and site specs, or is that coming from a lot of different, because, I mean, it's great, because the biggest concern is obviously if they sell the project, right?
Yes, yes, and, and I think we need to anticipate that, even if it's unlikely to happen.
But did you write these?
Yeah, I did. I did the first draft of it.
Oh, that's pretty impressive, I, I like it, but. Yeah, I, I, I do, overall, I do agree, uh, uh, overall, I do agree with, uh, the fact, I, I do agree with, with what Clark is saying, uh, after all, he is just an architect, like you said, but uh, I think it is addressed down low, uh, as Lauren pointed out, so I think we are covered and protected.
Okay.
Uh, but i- it is important to get into some of these things in the event that, uh, George and Ted aren't the, uh, aren't the people that actually put the building up.
Well, yeah, I, I think, you know, condition 12 is going to get us a separate set of plans where the specifics are going to be there and they'll be locked in at that time. I think George and his group were smart enough not to show up with lime green walls and stuff, so I'm okay with the changes that are being suggested.
All right, so we have a change and we're striking the sentence roof shall be black or dark gray in color, and we are adding um, a, uh, additional couple of words that says on the FRPS and photo depictions as submitted for review. All right, and we're leaving the sentence in that, uh, the building shall be white, neutral, or historic, colonial, et cetera.
Sounds good.
All right.
We, we haven't resolved condition eight in what, uh, Mr. Brodsky's suggesting we change, so I, it might be appropriate to ask how we would rewrite it at this point, so we can consider it.
All right, so Eric Potter, you want to put your hand down, please, and let's move on to page 20?
It's a fault of the system, by the way.
I'm, again, we haven't resolved condition eight on this page, as far as I know. Hello, page 19, not page 20?
You mean page eight on 19?
Page?
Item not eight on page 19. This is page 20.
Request, but Mr. Brodsky has requested two waivers. We discussed it, but we didn't decide what the language would, well, A, are we going to grant the waivers, number one, and B, what language we would put in there, so I would like to ask Adam if he has suggested language.
Madam Chair, may I speak?
Uh, yes, you may.
Uh, well, first of all, I, I suggest that, again, we have the reference to approved plans and that should be changed to FRPS. So perhaps something like Appicin will provide all service and loading areas. So perhaps something like applicant will provide all service and loading areas as required by the HBVOD bylaw and is shown on the FRPS except the board grants waivers of section six point six one and six point six two for the temporary loading space at eighty-seven Elm Street, which is not required to be screened, and the designated loading space at one twenty-four Elm Street, which is located adjacent to Margin Street.
Sorry, could you repeat where I left off here?
You type that one up.
I need to, I have too many boxes opened.
So Adam, if your language is specific, can you type it in the chat?
Yes, I can just read it again very quickly for Lauren. So, and the designated loading space at one twenty-four Elm Street is to be located adjacent to Margin Street.
That look okay. Adam, are you finished?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, Kara Snora?
Yeah, there just needs to be a reference to the design guidelines there, because the condition references the bylaw. Actually, Lauren, sorry, I would.
Will be section six point six point one.
And six point six two.
Of the design guidelines.
Right, well, let's give them their full, complete name, but for now, just put design guidelines. They have a very long name. Thanks, Lauren.
Mr. Brodsky, do you have a comment? No, he does not.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. And I'm just lowering my hand. Thank you.
Okay, are there other comments on page nineteen?
The word specifications just before condition eleven is misspelled.
Which item are you speaking of?
Just before condition number eleven, where it says building and site specifications in caps, specifications is misspelled.
All right, are we ready to move on? Okay, page twenty.
Madam Chair, just to go back to, oh, I'm sorry, page twenty?
Yeah, well, if you need to go back to, say, you need to go back.
No, okay, sorry, I'm looking at number eleven. Yeah. The curve on E. Curve should be curb.
Under which item?
E, it looks like Lauren's.
Okay. Mr. Brodsky?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On page twenty, paragraph eleven, it begins, prior to the commencement of site work, the applicant shall submit additional plans to the board for review. I'd suggest that that site work be changed to issuance, or commencement of the site work should be changed to issuance of the building permit, because we have a permitting sequence issue here, which is that it is going to take us a substantial amount of time to go through the chapter ninety-one permitting process. That can actually take up to a year. And so the final design plans really won't be done until that point of time. We may have the opportunity to do some site work prior to the issuance of the chapter ninety-one. That's a subject of discussion with DEP. And you will remember that we do have portions of the site that are outside of chapter ninety-one jurisdiction, so the department wouldn't have jurisdiction. So we simply want some flexibility. So the suggestion is that prior to the issuance of the building permit, the applicant shall submit the additional plans. It just gives us some flexibility to begin site work sooner.
Can you do site work without a building permit?
Oh.
As a practical matter?
Well, you can certainly do demolition work, for which you'll need a separate demolition permit. I don't know. I know that Mr. Howland's on the line or on the call, so he probably could inform us. But you can certainly do demolition under a demolition permit.
Yeah, I hear you. My concern only there is that you get too far into it before we have a final set of plans. That's all. I think everybody is kept honest by getting the plans as soon as possible. That's, again, I don't want to be impractical in saying that, but that's the concern, is that you get too far in.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lubitz?
So I understand that concern, but as Chairman Brodsky mentioned, the, it could give us the flexibility to accelerate the schedule. So by doing some further site work, including demolition and whatnot, could allow us to use some of that twelve month, potentially twelve month process with the state to be in a position so that we don't then start in twelve months and allow it to start a little earlier. But it wouldn't, it would just be enabling work. It wouldn't be.
I'm fine. The burden is, of course, gonna be on John Howland to make sure, you know, this project doesn't get too far ahead of itself before we have seen the final plan. So I'm fine with that. Understanding what you're gonna do and what the plans are, that's all.
All right, thank you. All right, we don't have any further comments on this page?
Again, before before condition thirteen specifications in caps is misspelled again.
Right, Lauren's got that.
Yep.
Anything else?
Yep.
Clark Brewer?
Yeah, number twelve, there's a number of things that say should, 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 must. I think that these should all be changed to shall. And then as a part of what we had just talked about, final design and color scheme should be added at the end of last section F. So all the shoulds should be shall. And add final design and color scheme to the last section F.
All right, Mr. Brodsky?
I'm surprised as a lawyer I missed the word shall.
Again, I just asked for clarification from Mr. Brewer. You're suggesting that that language also be changed in paragraph eleven of page twenty?
Twelve, twelve on page twenty, A, B, C, D, E, and F.
All right.
Anywhere it says should, should, I want change to shall.
Thank you. So you're not proposing changes to paragraph eleven, only paragraph twelve, correct?
Right, that's right.
Thank you.
All right, Clark, I think you're finished. Mr. Brodsky, are you finished?
No, I have in number thirteen.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the comprehensive signage package for review and approval. I didn't see anything that had also an exterior lighting package for review and approval. And in some cases, the exterior lighting, some of the interior lighting fixtures are gonna be important, like in the garage. You know, you don't want to have a big sodium vapor lights that are orange, that you can see from the outside. So I would say an exterior lighting package and anything visible from outside that's a kind of semi-public area, like the garage, should be submitted for review and approval.
All right, any other comments on page twenty?
I ask a clarification point. Clark, would you like me to add another condition down here to state that, or am I modifying thirteen?
Probably, probably just, yeah, probably another, number fourteen probably would be fine. That would be the simplest and clearest, I think.
Or exterior lighting?
Yep, and a garage lighting, if it's visible from the outside.
All right, Eve Tapper?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think I remember when we were talking about signage and the like in previous meetings, that there was some some board members who wanted it to be, wanted a say in the colors or the the compatibility of different signs. I don't know if that's something that the board members still care about, but that, I think this would be a place to put in what you would like to see and give the applicant some guidance on that before they come back with something that is completely not what you were looking for.
I would agree. Actually, in under thirteen, it's not well specified. It uses comprehensive, but that would mean you have them all. But it doesn't mean anything about what they should look like.
Right, and the board may not care what they look like, but I thought I remembered in previous conversations that the board had some comments about what they thought they wanted to look like. And I'd rather have them put that, I'd rather have the board put that into this, you know, bullet points, just like we do in the, for the condo association docs and the like, so that the applicant has an idea of what you're looking for before they come back with something that's they spend a lot of time and energy on and it's not what the board was expecting. If it's something that the board will care about going forward, or they just want to see what they have, and that's okay. But if there are some preconceived notions about what it should look like, that probably should be included here.
Okay, so do folks want to weigh in on this and put some language there?
I think if we are asking for further submissions, I don't know that we need to specify exactly what the signs are gonna look like.
But do we want to qualify it in any way? That's what she's asking.
Well, I mean, certain safety signs, they're going to be required to do a certain number of them very soon. I don't know. I mean, I don't expect wild and crazy signs at this side either, you know, that are gonna look some way that we're not going to like. I don't have a strong feeling either way about giving their specificity now or giving it to them later. And as far as the lighting goes, I just want to point out that when we get to page twenty-five, there is one particular type of surface lighting, outdoor lighting that is required by this, which actually hasn't been voted on fully yet. But again, I kind of need flexibility for that, too. At this point, at this point, I think when they come with further plans, they have to show us something definite. We're either gonna say yea or nay, but I think they get a sense of what we're looking at for design and what the town would like to see for design. It's gotta fit in with the character of the town.
So do we want to use some kind of language such as coordinated design so that we don't end up with five different styles of signs on the project? I have two comments. Let me go to Clark and then to Mr. McGoldrick.
Yeah, on this one, I really think that it's gonna be in the developer applicant's interest to put together a signage package that speaks to the quality of the overall project and reinforces, you know, the goals of the the future residents and commercial space. But, you know, there, you know, you know, the reality is they're not gonna know everything about what the potential signage requirements of a retailer are gonna be. I, but I'd like to give the applicant developer some latitude on this to try to create as comprehensive signage, signage locations, typefaces that are, you know, as classy as possible. So I wouldn't, and that's subjective, right? I just trust that they're gonna come up with the right thing for this one. My sense is that this one isn't gonna be an issue, but we'll know right away as soon as we see their package, right?
Okay, so let's ask our applicant, Mr. McGoldrick.
Madam Chair, instead of trying to design the signage tonight, I agree with Mr. Brewer that we obviously will do what we did with the planning board in the past. And before we submit a final set, we'll have communication with the board and show them some different ideas that we have. We also want to coordinate, though, with the rest of the town, with whatever happens on Elm Street, with the Harbor Municipal Plan and that committee as to what they may be doing on the rest of the harbor plan. So I believe that the language you have in there with a comprehensive, as well as the right, you guys have the right to say yea or nay. I think we know the direction going forward.
All right, do I see any further questions or comments on this point? All right, then let's move on to page twenty-one, short and sweet.
Are we on page twenty-one?
We are on page twenty-one.
All right. This is just me in drafting. I don't, because we deal with the condo documents later on in section twelve, page twenty-nine, I don't particularly think this section is needed anymore. There was another condition that had been moved somewhere else in the original draft, so, you know, I just for organizational clarity, I just think section three can go out because we deal with it later.
I would just comment that this is speaking very specifically to the Commercial Condominium Association and not the association overall. So Lauren, can you, you can mark this and then let's make sure that what Tom said is found in the document later on or something that implies what is implied here, because this is quite specific.
Yeah, no, I'm just, what I'm looking at, section twelve, this wouldn't be deleted, it would be moved. Just so everything about the condo documents is in one spot. But here's where I also want to ask the applicant a question. We were in drafting this, and I think Lauren may have asked you the question earlier this week, have you decided, are you going to have a single association with commercial and residential members, or are you gonna create two condominium associations? Not that I think that's critical for us tonight, but our overall concern is that the residential portion of the condominium can't destroy the commercial portion of the condominium. You know, so that the commercial component stays in its current square footage, and it stays viable and not get basically screwed by the residential owners. So at some point in time, I think, whether now or in the future, when you do submit the condo documents, we have to have a clear understanding about the governance, understanding that we're trying to protect the commercial component of it from getting screwed.
All right, thank you. Mr. McGoldrick and then Clark Brewer?
So under the state charter for condominiums, the entire project is owned by all of the owners, both residential and commercial. And the ownership interests determined by the state are based on the value of each individual unit. So you cannot, you cannot create a prior pursuit group with a residential, commercial, because the residential is gonna be larger than the commercial base. But what you do is you have one condominium association, and then you have separate budgets underneath that association, so that there's a residential budget that adheres to everything that is residential. Then you have the common area, which is those areas that are common, but also with the commercial space. It's what we've done over at BlackRock, where we have our commercial entity as well as the residential. There's one condominium regime, but then there's two separate budgets underneath it.
And that's what I'm personally familiar with in mixed-use condos. The question came up, though, where there might in the drafting process, whether you might have two completely different entities. But again, I don't think it's a question you need to answer today, but, you know, just when we do review the condo documents, you just want to make sure there's no opportunity for the residential units to somehow reduce the number of commercial units in the project. to somehow reduce the number of commercial units in the project. We're, we're looking at the commercial component that you're proposing in this project to be the bare, you know, the bare minimum of commercial space. It can't be reduced in the future, and I think there's conditions further on that state that. So anyway, I, I just think that this can, you know, this, it's just an organizational comment. I just think section three can be moved to section twelve.
Okay, so we'll move that. Mr. McGoldrick?
Just need to lower my hand, sorry.
All right, Clark Brewer?
I, I don't mind if it, if this section gets moved, but the, the phrase to create robust commercial activity is, is the operative phrase. And I, I think it's really going to be important to have, whatever the, whatever the arrangement is, that there's whatever limitations on the commercial space, presumably that would be the most important thing. And, and potential uses and conflicts policies, hours of, of potential operation. These are, these are all the things that, like, if the residences have total control over commercial space that are going to be a, a problem. That this is what I think needs to be addressed in, in, in these legal documents. Just from a policy, limitations, uses and conflicts perspective for that, for the, I'll call it fledgling commercial spaces, that's a part of this, that it's a really critical part of, of this mixed-use project, that they be protected somehow by their bylaws. And I think I've made my comments. That's, that's really all I have.
All right, thank you. Tom Callahan?
Yeah, I, I just want to add as I'm looking at it right now as we get ahead to it, condition two E and F of section twelve, which will be found on page twenty-nine, are trying to address that very point to make sure that the commercial units have some protections and just can't be unilaterally eliminated by the residential owners. So we'll get to that further on, but I, I think from those conditions, Georgia's group is going to get the gist of what we're looking for to see in the end condo documents. But I, I personally have seen these in mixed-use and you know how the, you know, the documents can be written to accomplish all of that. So I'm not worried about having that down the road.
All right, so we are moving section three, page twenty-one, later into the document. Or we, and, and we're going to match it to make sure that the, the intent is, this is unique. And if it's already rolled into something else, Lauren will change the, the information so that it is, makes sense.
Yeah, it, it can, it can become a new subsection E to conditions two of section twelve. I'll, I'll, I'll put that in the chat, so.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Page twenty-two. Tom, do you mean to have your hand up?
Oh, no, sorry.
Okay, thanks. Does anybody have any comments about open space and public amenity areas?
I, I'll only point out that in condition three, a lot of the details of the relationship between the condo and the town, and the town over these spaces is being put off to two future documents that are mentioned in that condition. And I think we discussed that at the last meeting, that that's how it would all be dealt with. This is, condition three is setting out a bunch of things we want to make sure those future documents say and include, but the real meat and the real details are going to come in those two future documents.
All right, so does that, do your comments lead to any change in the text here? All right, Clark Brewer?
The only thing I'd like to discuss with the board is, is the last section F at the bottom of the page, restricting access to the public amenity hours between dawn and dusk. I think I threw that out there. I don't know if that's the right time. So it requires permission of the selectmen other than dawn or dusk, so.
She's on the couch here.
So you can't have, you can't have a bunch of fishermen standing there and, and fishing at high tide at, at four AM.
Wait, wait, I want to see a hand, please? Thank you.
So is dawn to dusk the right time? You know, for, and another example would be December twenty-first. Dusk is, or sunset is four fifteen. Dusk probably extends, you know, up to another half an hour. Should we be more specific?
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with being specific. The intent here was to basically, as a means of avoiding future conflict between public users of that space and condo owners, is to try to limit, you know, annoying nuisance, noisome activities, you know, concerts, music, sitting there with a boombox. I think if a guy is fishing, he's not making a lot of noise and nobody's going to care. But that's the intent. If we need to be more specific about that, that's fine. But the overall design of that condition was to try to take away potential conflict by telling the owners a bone and saying we don't have the park heavily used at night, which is one that would be the most offensive, I imagine, to a unit owner.
All right, so let's hang on there. Adam Brodsky and then Clark Brewer and then like, I'd like to comment.
Madam Chair, this is the sort of condition that we would typically negotiate together with DEP as part of our chapter ninety-one management plan. However, I know that the board wanted to weigh in on this issue, but this is the difficulty of trying to do this piecemeal. If you're going to consider hours, it's typical, you know, what are the ways licensed to see public access, dawn to dusk? And you, you are allowed to restrict access to ensure public safety and things of that under the chapter ninety-one program. So again, our, our preference and what we had offered was to address that in the context of a management plan, which we have to come back to the board with to review anyway. But that's the difficulty of this analysis of this kind of permit without having all of the players at the table. Thank you.
All right, Clark Brewer?
Okay, then, as a follow-up, dawn to dusk is fine because if the management comes after our, our approval or vote, then it can always be changed by modification from dawn to dusk to something else. But it's a good starting point. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody had thought it through and we can move on.
Tom Callahan, do you want to speak?
No, no, sorry, I'm doing.
I, I just, so how will we deal with the possibility that a commercial use is open past dusk?
Not, not on, that's not on our property. This is only talking about the public amenities space. So what the restaurant does is up to the condo association and how late it stays open is up to the condo association.
Well, so do, do we have in this particular section a bit of a conflict where we say dawn and dusk? And then we specify that the selectmen will be able to make some exceptions or provide some mechanism? And we state here hours ten AM to nine PM?
Again, I, I look at this, set this condition as just a guideline to guide the future negotiation of the chapter ninety-one management plan and the easements and covenants between the town and the developer, just for the public amenities space. I'm trying not to create a nuisance by the public as against the condo owners. What the condo decides to do, like I said, to their spaces and how late they stay open is their business. I'm just saying for this particular portion of the site, the town will agree on some reasonable restrictions of time just to avoid the potential of a future nuisance situation and conflict. It's not mutually exclusive to, or it's not tied into whatever happens in a restaurant or a store within the condo.
Okay, Eric Potter?
Yes, so I've been one of the biggest proponents of giving leeway in the commercial space area that's required in consideration of the public amenity areas. I, I will say this. I, I, I find these restrictions to be great for the condominium unit owners, but are they contrary to what the, the, what's allowed by the town? So I, I mean, dawn to dusk is fine by me. I, I agree with Clark. I think it's a great starting point. But, you know, I think this is, we're, we're giving back, which I think we should. We're not requiring the, the actual commercial space that the bylaw requires in return for this public amenity area. And the rationale is here with, with this is that, well, we want to limit the timeframe by which the, the citizens or the public are going to be able to use this public amenity area because it's really not going to be too, too, too enticing to the private condo owners if people are walking around at eight o'clock at night or nine o'clock at night. So I, I, I would say I'd like the dawn to dusk, especially because I think it's a seasonal use area. I don't know that we need to have at the end of paragraph F and shall be limited to the hours of ten AM to nine PM. I think the select board, you know, should have the authority to make exceptions for special events that, 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 that they think are in the best interest of the town. You know, let's say it was, this was the two hundred fiftieth anniversary. Let's say they want to have something there. And I think that, you know, condo unit owners are going to be understanding of those limited events. If there's a general rule of thumb that from dawn to dusk, that's when people will be using the area. But I don't want to overly limit it because we gave a, it's a big give back by not requiring what's actually, you know, in the bylaw.
All right. Unless there is something new that needs to be discussed, can we move on to the next page?
So we're just keeping it then?
I'm, I'm, I'm checking to see. So Eric, would you recommend that it be less specific?
What? I would hope that would be the follow-up question to something what I took, to what I just said. Yes, I mean, I would think that, I, I mean, exactly what I just said. I mean, I, I'm fine with the dawn to dusk. Sometimes I get long-winded, but I think I was clear that I think the select board should be given, you know, permission to have special events at the, at the, at that public amenity area. And nine PM in the middle of summer is sometimes not even when the sun goes down. So I, I think that can be a bit limiting. You know, I'm not saying go to twelve or one AM, but, you know, within reason.
I have to say I agree with you. I, I actually think that dawn to dusk is, is really constraining. If, if this is going to be a public amenity area, we're basically saying that half the day people will not be able to access it.
That, that's not what I'm saying, but. Again, I, I, I drafted this as a, as a, again, throwing a bone is the right term to the residents so that they don't have a band concert out there at night. That's the kind of, so.
That's not what it says.
But the select board can, can make it, make an exception and allow something like that to occur. You're going to.
All right, so, well, so the condition, condition number three is saying that the specifics of the relationship of this space to the condo is going to be subject to those two future documents. And, and then what follows is A through F, the way it's written here. I think a sentence got lost in the translation. The A through F looks like we're mandating that these things may happen when, when in fact we're suggesting these, these are things we might like to see addressed in the future document that the selectmen and we in the chapter ninety-one management plan are going to negotiate down the road. I, I guess the, the intent of the condition is just to make suggestions of what needs to be included and addressed in those future documents, not dictate, not dictating what's in those future documents.
Well, then I would amend F because F does say shall instead of.
Yeah, I, I, and I see that. And I think maybe there just needs to be an amendment to, to suggest that A through F are topics of discussion that need to be addressed in these future documents without dictating a particular outcome and let us in the chapter ninety-one plan and the select board and the easements and covenants negotiate the actual hard and fast details.
So, so then if, if that's the case, Tom, it would seem to make sense to take the specificity out of here.
Well, it, it just takes a little.
I mean, I think this could be reworded to suggest how the town might behave without having to specify time.
Because it's right F.
This will become, this will become something that the, the association can stand and say, okay, hey, look, this is what we mean when you say that.
Yeah, I know. I'm, I'm, all right, so I'm running it through my head in, in the chat, working on suggested language to change it. So let me, let me do that and we can come back to it maybe later at the end of the night.
All right, Clark Brewer?
Well, you know, I think the intent is fine with these. As if, as long as they're recommendations to, to the negotiation with the selectmen and not requirements, then I think we're fine. And if you put in the first paragraph that these are our recommendations and not required.
Right, that's, that's how I'm approaching it, Clark, right now.
Good, yeah, that makes sense.
All right, so I have three hands up and I think I, they all might come down. And Eric, do you have something further to say?
Don't yell at me, Amy.
No, what?
Don't yell at me. I, I gotta get, I, I gotta.
I just can't, you know.
Lower hand, it's over there, I found it.
There we go, perfect. You guys are getting really good at this. Okay, let's move on to page twenty-three. We're doing better than the last time.
Madam Chair?
Uh, yes.
Just to clarify, is the striking of F?
Oh, oh.
Language is going to be modified and it'll come back to you tonight.
Yeah, don't, don't touch it right now.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Brodsky?
Thank you, Madam Chair. With respect to page number twenty-three, we have three proposed changes. The first is in paragraph one. It's the third sentence from the bottom of that paragraph, beginning with applicant, the election to develop the three local action units. And it respectfully suggests that we use the same language that we used before. Applicant, the election to create or develop the three local action units. With respect to paragraph number two, again, this is a timing issue. And so this says, if the off-site option is elected, the applicant shall notify the board of this election in writing within thirty days after issuance of this permit. We're simply not going to be in any position thirty days after the issuance of this permit to make that election. So my suggestion is that similarly, after issuance of the building permit and not the special permit, we need more time to do that work.
I'm sorry, say that again.
In paragraph number two, second line began with writing within thirty days after issuance of the building permit, not this permit, because we're physically not going to be able to create these three units thirty days after issuance of the special permit.
Okay, I, I hear what you're saying.
Thank you. And the last. Thank you. And the last, I'm sorry.
I guess, I mean, you realize that, you know, in condition number one, there is a deadline on this. And, um, you know, your choice to go off-site needs to come fairly soon. I mean, at least to the point of certificates of occupancy, maybe far along, but.
Tom, can we stop this and let him get his last one on?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
And then I want to go through folks that have got their hands up and then I'll come back to you.
Sorry, sorry. No, I'm done.
Okay, so, Mr. Brodsky, would you go to item three, please?
Thank you. And the third item is in paragraph number six, the second sentence, uh, which says that purposes the town's compliance with MGL chapter 40B and its tenant regulations in perpetuity. Now, I know this is a sensitive issue for the board. In fact, I believe the board discussed this with respect to another project prior to the opening of this hearing. But I just want to make the point that neither 40B nor your inclusionary zoning bylaw requires that these units be affordable in perpetuity. In fact, that's contrary to 40B, which I believe Ted and George are more expert than I am with respect to affordable housing, but it's 30 years. And a perpetual condition like this is candidly onerous on a property owner. So I don't know whether Ted or George wishes to speak to that further. But we request that the words in perpetuity be deleted so that this provision is in compliance with 40B and your inclusionary zoning bylaw.
All right, I have four people to speak. I'm going to go to Paul Colery first, Karis North, and then Clark Brewer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I lost the full screen, I guess, because we're going to discussion, but just in keeping with the same language that we used up front, earlier discussion about the three units, I think we referred to them as a minimum of three units. So maybe we could say three units or greater.
I think we use the word more.
No, where she wrote create or develop the three local action units, we use the word three, a minimum of three. So that if the developer decided to add a few more units, we had discussion at length about it earlier.
It's in that sentence where Adam, in condition one, where he modified the word develop to create and develop. We put in the same modification we did earlier. At least, you know, a minimum of three local action units.
Correct, correct, the minimum.
All right, Karis North?
Well, I'm sorry, Madam.
Oh, sorry. Is that it? Keep going.
No. And then again, in number two, hopefully, you know, being someone that's coming from the Affordable Housing Steering Committee, hopefully, we don't have to wait till the final building permit is granted. Maybe we could say, you know, or sooner. If that's available and if they identify a property that becomes available sooner, we don't want to have to wait till the final permit is granted.
Other comments, Mr. Colery?
Uh, no, I think that covers my comments.
All right. Thank you. Karis North? Madam Chair, could you come back to me? I'm just looking at something. All right, I'm going to go to Clark Brewer, then I'd like to say something.
Yeah, I don't disagree with anything that's been said on this section with the exception of the in perpetuity requirement for the affordable housing units, you know, I mean, I would say Cohasset had one of the least, the worst affordable housing components prior to Avalon coming in. Avalon agreed to do their units in perpetuity. And I don't think it's unreasonable to ask for the same. Oh, that's it. That's the rest of my comment.
All right. So I would like to make a comment. First off, there's a typographical error in number four and the second, the third sentence from the bottom of point four, where there's two suches, says until such point such. And the second issue is
That's not a typo.
It's not? It isn't?
No, it isn't.
West building, until such point such, I see. Okay. The second point that I would like to raise is that I feel like, so let's take the following scenario, which is that for some reason, it turns out we end up putting the units onsite rather than offsite. Then if we have it constrained to 30 years as opposed to in perpetuity, in 30 years, what happens to those units? Do they revert to the homeowner association? Is there compensation for their reversion so that affordable housing in value is produced someplace else? I feel like if we don't have something more specific, that's going to be a problem. A second item is, and I think it was Tom who mentioned it, but I don't remember who did exactly. If we wait till the building permit is approved, we're talking about if the 40B analysis takes a year, we're waiting for a full year before we get the units. And the whole idea of of where we got to this point and having it offsite was that this stuff would come online sooner than that. So it seems to me we need to have a time before the building permit is initiated. So the two points. Um, let's see, Ted Lubitz, George McGoldrick, McGoldrick and Karis North.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So with respect to the timing, so the idea is, you know, producing the unit, buying the units is a big financial commitment. And the time of building permit is when our project is financeable and we have the financing in place. So to expect us to go out prior to us having a building permit or be ready to start our project to produce those units while in advance, the timing just won't work. Our hope, though, is that our strategy will still deliver the units while in advance of a CO. So the intent is to come in with the plan and actually, you know, Paul Colery's comment that we can come in sooner, I think is a great idea because we might be able to do it. I don't want to be stuck with a 30-day window after a building permit. But we might be in a position to come in in advance of that, but, you know, the language as drafted right now, it's it's not workable because we will not have a plan within 30 days of a decision being rendered or a permit being issued under these terms. And then also just with respect to Avalon, I think it's actually been renamed, maybe the Preserve now or something. I think it was recently sold. But that's a very different project than what we're proposing here. You know, that project is, quite frankly, you know, Avalon developer is probably one of the more sophisticated 40B developers in the, you know, definitely in Massachusetts, it's the only 40B program, but one of the more sophisticated suburban residential developers in the country. And it's their business model. So they build it into their process and their rental units. And also a big difference there is, you know, 100% of those units counted towards the affordable housing inventory. So it's a very different project and I don't think we should be drawing parallels to it. Again, I've got a, you know, 16-year history in affordable housing and the standard is 30 years. Sometimes there are extended use agreements put in place that sometimes add another 15 years to that. But it's quite rare, aside from some circumstances, to have perpetuity.
Um, all right, I'd like to speak to the last point. So how would you recommend that we set up a situation in which if after 30 years, the situation I described is that the, the relationship is up, who do the units revert back to? And if they revert back to the homeowners association, what will the town receive in return?
So typically, so the resident will never lose their housing. And also there is a distinction between rental housing and homeownership. So typically, a homeownership unit will have a long-term deed restricted because that's, that's the owner is the owner of that unit. And we've talked about this a little bit and throughout these hearings, but that is affordable forever. So homeowner, so they cannot sell that unit to make a profit. It does not revert back to a homeowners association or anything like that. That stays in perpetuity, but that person is living in it forever. So they're the physical owner of it. They can sell it to another affordable qualified owner, but it stays affordable. What we're really talking about here in the off-site model will be rental housing. And that's one of the big distinctions here. The other thing I'll add and one of the reasons why typically the state, and it's a public policy issue, but because the rents are lower in these affordable housing properties, or rental ones at least, they require renovations and rehab typically within 30 years. And that's one of the reasons that it is 30 years because that's the end of the useful life of a lot of the components. One of the ways to get additional resources to renovate the units and make sure that they keep them up to date is to be able to actually discuss that with the state and say, this housing is actually at risk of losing its affordability. We need some more resources to be able to reinvest in the property and create it and give it another 30 years of affordability. So it's actually a point of negotiation in those additional 30 years. We see that throughout Boston right now. There's a portfolio called 13A, which those have actually all been developed about 30 to 40 years ago. The use restrictions are burning off, but none of those units are actually being lost to affordability. The city and the state are doubling down and renewing for another 30 years or 45 years. So it's a pretty common practice in the industry. And I think that's one of the reasons why 40B actually provides for that 30-year period.
All right, Karis North and then Mr. McGoldrick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of points. First of all, obviously, the decision about whether these units are affordable in perpetuity or not is a policy decision for the board. But it is certainly consistent with the direction the town is wanting to go in to create perpetual affordable units. With respect to the DHCD, and I do a fair amount of 40B work in other communities, I am not seeing anything but perpetual units being done in perpetuity, including rental units, and I'm working on a couple of big projects like that right now. That is where the state is going. That is what the state policy seems to be. And that is where most cities and towns are going these days in the work that I've been doing. So I don't think it's unusual to have a restriction that the units be affordable in perpetuity.
All right, thank you. Mr. McGoldrick, you are in line next.
Madam Chair, as you know, we have been dealing with affordable housing component for quite some time now, trying to get ahead of it. And a lot of the conversation tonight has been the timing of it. We do hope and anticipate that we get it done sooner rather than later. We just can't commit to something within the 30 days we talked about. So tying into the building permit is fine. Most likely, it'll get done beforehand. And I think one of the biggest issues regarding the perpetuity is that we've actually had conversations with building owners. And one of them in particular was very resistant to do more than what the state allowed. He kept using those phrases, why would I do more than what the state requires? So that, maybe if we just at least have the flexibility, again, we have to come back to you to get approval. So at least if we have some flexibility, we may, for example, if we find a great property that's got more than three units and is walking distance of downtown, but the owner, we just can't convince the owner to do it for more than the 30-year requirement, I wouldn't want the board to be stuck by this language. So at least if we could have some flexibility in it, that would be helpful, I think, for all this going forward. I mean, what we're trying to do is to get the unit count up for the town. So if we get this permit approved, if we get this project approved, that's going to help us stave off other potential larger 40B projects such like on Pleasant Street that don't belong there. Because if we're going to be able to show that we're moving forward, the town's moving forward, getting affordable housing. So we think it's really important to do this, but if we just had some flexibility, I think that would help us.
All right, thank you. Paul Grady and then Tom Callahan and then Karis North.
Well, just hearing this north, I'm kind of in agreement in the perpetuity of the state and locals are going that way. And I am curious about the off-site, if you have three units being built already and, but you can't meet the 30-day requirement off-site. We have 30, three units coming into 23, if I'm not mistaken, you're building. So where's the offset location? We couldn't get that within 30 days? Just try to follow. Because you have units being built if the project's approved, and I hope it is. Why not there? I still haven't got a clear answer to that. If the other area is just in a gray area, it's ambiguous as to where it may go. I mean, I've heard a number of things. I've heard my daughter mentioned the rec center as a possibility and things like that, which I hope is not the case. But you have a project currently in place that we're looking on approving. Why not there? So we're heading for offsite. So I'm, that's where I would think that you'd have that or at least there'd be steps being taken to have those three or more units in and before, you know, but you're asking for leeway and getting a project that's going to be built. You can understand my meaning.
I guess I'm not entirely clear of what the question is, but and again, I believe that the meeting that you missed, we spent a lot of time on this. We, the reason for not doing it on-site, we spent probably an hour and a half, two hours on. And I think
Mr. McGoldrick, I heard it. I just wanted a little more clarification.
Putting affordable units within a high-end condominium is setting the owners up to fail. Those are words that came from the steering committee, from the housing committee, from anybody that's worked with it. The easiest example is that the homeowners association in X number of years decides to change the roof or change the skin or add another pool or do something. Those affordable houses, even though they have a lower percentage, they still get hit with these capital improvements. So that's probably the best example that we've heard over this course of the last two years of investigating this, as to why to put them offsite. We also believe that if we put them offsite, we can probably get more than three units. And as I said, we've been investigating a number of different possibilities to do that.
All right, I understand that, but I'm not, again, I'm hoping this project goes forward and it's a complete success. But I am just curious as to why that the offsite projects wouldn't be somewhat of a priority. So we know about that. So we're not looking for extensions or to pardon me, you know, that we can't meet the 30-day guideline unless, you know, the permit's issued. So you see where I'm going?
To clarify, I'm sorry, to clarify, the language that's in there tonight before the suggestions that were made to change it to building permit require that 30, if you vote on this tonight and after the timeframe that it gets written in the appeal period, we would then have 30 days. So you talked about perhaps March, April, May, we still have a chapter 91 license unfortunately that we have to get. That could take a year. So we can't commit to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars more in two or three months based on a project not fully approved. That's the issue that Ted had mentioned earlier. You're, obviously you guys are the most important approval process. But we have conservation, we have zoning, and we also have the chapter 91 license. So we're not we're not there. If you guys all give us the high five tonight, we're not ready to go forward. We can't go on the ground. We've got additional work to go forward. And that's why we can't commit to spending money on the affordable housing in 30 days. I think what we're asking for is pretty reasonable, because again, if we did it on-site, now you're talking two years away, if not more, before those become available.
That's true, but they're guaranteed.
Again, Under this permit, they guarantee either offsite or onsite. They're guaranteed either way. We're not getting a C of O unless we have units either onsite or offsite. That's in the language. That's in the language. That's, there's no getting around that.
And that you'll have the locations in place and the units be ready to go?
We, we have to come back to you with the proposal, correct? Of locations, the units, everything else.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
All right, Caris North.
Thank you. So just to clarify, this is, this, the, the, the requirement for thirty days in option two is simply whether you're going to elect to do the work to provide the units onsite or off-site. It's not to do, and obviously you have to do some work to make that decision. But it's not, you know, shovels in the ground or anything like that, because then you obviously have to come back a hundred and twenty days later with, you know, the plan and design. So, and I guess we've heard you say, you know, you needed the permit to be issued to, to move forward on the affordable housing, and that's what this, this condition was sort of tied to. So that's, that's the, that's the theory behind it, is to make sure this continues to move to get to affordable units as soon as possible and sooner than, as the soonest possible, if you're going to do off-site units. Does that make sense?
It does, so long as you understand the full, and you do, where we are in the project. It's now January of twenty twenty-one. And if this hopefully gets approved very quickly, we still have to file the chapter ninety-one. And you know, that could take six months to a year. So we can't commit to building, buying or deed restricting units before we know we have a project. Yours is not the final, I guess I'm not being clear. This is not the final commitment. This is not the final permit. We have other permits, unfortunately. So we, we agree, I think we all agree that we want to get the affordable units identified and done and on the S H R ASAP. We are committing to that. And I think the language that we suggested was just changing the building permit gets it sooner rather than if it is done onsite.
All right, Tom Callahan, and then I'd like to make a comment.
As far as condition two goes, if it's switched to building permit, I'm fine with that. I don't know where the thirty day came from. Maybe it was in my region. I don't recall it. I mean, the ultimate deadline here is the occupancy permits for the West Building. Condition one makes it clear, Paul, and I'm just with Paul Grady, that they have to do these units in this project. And they, but we'll give them the opportunity to search off-site with the deadline being when they have occupancy permits. I, I understand what George is saying and think it's impossible for them to come up with something within thirty days of issuing this permit. The building permits are far off. That gives them plenty of time. But to, to George, I want to say that, you know, with the last meeting, you said it would probably be done quicker off-site than onsite. And I've taken that part because my interest was, given where we are in the forty B count, to do whatever, gases these three units or four units, whatever it ends up being as quickly as possible so that we can meet the threat of more forty B projects. I will tell you, I had got, you know, a couple of lobbying calls that I should be drawing the line in the sand and making it go into this building, into this project. But, you know, the reasons I said before with my experience with some projects in Boston, I just don't know how it does work. Thirty years from now, twenty years from now, when you have lower income people living in a very high-end project. So the intent here from my perspective is just to get whatever we can do the fastest way possible.
All right, I, I, I think
That being said, but let me also say it should be in perpetuity, and especially if they're off-site. I don't know why it can't be in perpetuity. And I'm just curious, George, if you're talking about owners don't want to do this, and I'm, I'm not, maybe I'm not understanding how you're approaching this, but if somebody who's a current owner is going to, I, I would have assumed you would have bought something offsite. Develop these units and then sell them and then do whatever. I'm, I'm not sure why an existing owner and how an existing owner is being tied into this, but I, I would insist on perpetuity. If it, you know, because, you know, who knows, thirty years from now, maybe forty B won't exist anymore. And then maybe we could, we always have the option of reevaluating it if there is such a material change in the law. But this town's always behind the eight ball. We shouldn't create a situation thirty years from now, we'll be behind the eight ball again. I'm hoping and expecting you're going to develop these, I'm expecting that you're going to develop these off-site relatively quickly. But it has to be in perpetuity.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. I, so we've got an either or here, and I don't understand why we don't come up with an and. So it makes sense that thirty days after the issuance of this permit might be too soon for them to be able to act. But all the way until the building permit is provided is a long way off. So why don't we find a midpoint where it's possible to specify, particularly from the standpoint of hearing what I think is an interesting set of, well, the use of terms when you described, George, that you were speaking to people that are owners. I, I, I presume you're talking about a small apartment building and you're going to buy apartment units for rent within them? Is that the thought? I'd like to hear a little bit more about that. But two points. One is the building permit is so far off and the, and we've been talking all the time about the units being off-site because we can do them more quickly. But thirty days is too short and the building permit is too long.
Why is it too long?
Why does it take too long? Because they've got all these other, they've got, they, they're right. I mean, there, there's a risk that they're taking because they have permitting processes that are going to take them, you know, six months, eight months, ten months, a year. But that means that we have to carry on with them. And unless they get their building permit sooner than that.
Well, I, I, I'm even willing to live with occupancy permits. That's how this was originally drafted, which is even further out. Because I can assure you that George's group is avoiding putting these units in these buildings beyond all else. It's not going to help them from a marketing point of view, and it's not going to work from a management point of view. So they have every incentive in the world to develop these off-site.
Yeah, but I, I understand that, but I
And yes, they, they could be in potentially a long permitting process. You know, chapter ninety-one taking a year? Yeah, maybe, you know, COVID is slowing every state agency that exists to a crawl.
I know, Tom, but I don't understand your point. I, I, I think we just that there's a midpoint between thirty days and when the building permit is provided that would allow them to establish what, what, what we're asking initially is what the plan is. Maybe we have too many items in it to make it actually operational, right? But, but in terms of, of knowing, we're asking them first to tell us what they're going to do and commit to that. And then we have specifications about the, the, the character and location of the site. So maybe we want to modify this, but I, I don't think that we want to wait until the, the project itself starts building.
That, that's the, that's the decision-making time in the way this was drafted. I, again, they the, the, their incentive is to do this off-site. There's no doubt about that. They will work extremely hard to get it off-site for a lot of reasons, maybe not the right reasons. And by the way, in some of these lobbying calls I've got, the concerns of other people in the town apparently is the teen center is one, but it's where will these units be located? Because frankly, lots of people don't want these in their backyard anymore. And that's why they want them in this project. You know, the, the town doesn't have a stellar record here about wanting affordable housing. But I think we have to be realistic in what they're facing in permitting. And what's going, you know, what their motivations and their incentives are to do.
I'm not questioning their motives or anything like that. I'm just simply saying motives originally in specifying this document the way it is was to get the units as soon as possible. I understand that thirty days is too soon.
Let's say it's six months. Let's say it's six months. Six months from now, they don't have an off-site project developed yet.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm asking for a midpoint.
Right, so.
And I think six months would at least give us a better sense of what they're planning. I mean, I, I, and I asked Mr. McGoldrick to, it's, to specify that the model that you were describing in terms of an owner, are, are you speaking in terms of buying a, a, a building? I mean, you were describing a very specific example. I'm curious about what you find that could be convertible in Cohasset for rental housing.
So there's, I'll, I'll give you three examples. We can partner with Habitat and provide funding that gets them building sooner rather than later. Because, for example, the A O H Uzum Road that is out in the market now, Habitat is likely to bid on it. But then Habitat basically puts it on their desk and they wait until they can have the time to fundraise to do it. It could be a year, it could be three, it could be five years. We would step in and provide the funding so it gets done right away. So that's one opportunity. The second opportunity is we buy an existing multi-unit building and deed restrict them. And the third opportunity is if we can't buy a building is to work with the building owner and pay them to deed restrict the property. And again, I just want to mention that the Affordable Housing Trust and the Steering Committee, they have a list of priorities in terms of how to get units quickest. And the number one priority is find existing units. So that being said, I think the one thing, Chairman, that, that you need to understand is that, that we are using thirty days. That came, no one's ever used thirty days to do this. We, right now, under the bylaw, we have to do it by the time we get the building to the, the occupancy certificates, which is at least two years away. We're agreeing that we want it sooner. So we're looking at the building permit. So we're already making this huge concession to go from two-plus years to significantly less than that. And we will work, and you can put language in there, we'll work hard to get done even sooner. It also doesn't happen overnight. We can identify the units, make an agreement. It starts to go through your board, the Housing Trust and DHCD. So it's not as if we found something tomorrow, it becomes affordable the day after. It still has a timeframe to go under that. So with all that being said, yes, if you ever commit, we're going to do it as soon as possible. But the way the language is tonight doesn't make any sense. We'll agree to the, the building permit adding that. And it is significantly less time than what is required, which is a certificate of occupancy. It's getting late. I can't talk.
Great. That was very helpful. That was very good clarification. Okay, I have Ted Lubitz, Eve Tapper, Clark Brewer, Tom Callahan.
Well, I'm taking.
Okay.
Sorry, I lowered my head too.
Okay, then I have Eve Tapper, Clark Brewer, Paul Grady.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm, I'm listening to this discussion and I'm wondering whether or not number two is required, is needed at all. They are required to provide the, the three units. They've said they want to do it as soon as possible, but they are required to do the three units. And if they don't, if they do them off-site and get them sooner, that's fabulous. But if they don't, there's another requirement, number four, that says if they're not showing where they're going to do them and haven't made any progress, they go in the West Building and that's the end of it. I, I don't, I'm trying to wrap my head around why you need them to tell you which one they've chosen and then give you a substantial description of how they're going to do it well before they maybe have made up their mind. And the bottom line is that they are required to provide the units three or more. And I, I mean, I would argue for keeping the imperperity in there because I have seen that happen in other communities that I've worked with as well. But I'm not really sure why number two is even necessary for the board to, to know exactly when they have made their decision. The bottom line is that be either, either before the occupancy permits are issued for the West Building or well before that, they will have satisfied this requirement, which is really the three units. How they satisfy that requirement seems to me to be a little bit not as necessary. I, I, the board seems to be interested in it. I'm, I'm just saying that you know you're going to get the units and to, to be meddling in exactly when you know you're going to get the units seems to be a little bit of overkill for the condition itself.
Well, they are slightly different. Item two speaks about a process. And item four speaks more about an outcome. I don't disagree with the possibility that two, if, if is encompassed in four, but they're not exactly the same.
Madam Chair, I understand that, but I'm not sure. I think the process is, I've never seen the process written in this manner in, in a condition. The condition is that they have to provide the units. How they provide the units is not necessarily ever, I've never seen it written in this manner in the conditions. There are options in the board by, by approving this is allowing them. The board has to allow them to even consider off-site. Other, you could require them all be onsite, or you could allow them to consider off-site. And it seems like the board consensus has been to allow them to consider it off-site. But the, but then I understand number two is about the process once they have that flexibility, but I don't, I've never seen it put in a condition in this manner. You're going to get the, what's in the conditions usually is that you will get the units and, and the timeframe is really in number four, which is if they haven't decided where they're going to put them off-site and they want their final occupancy permits for the West Building, then you don't give them to them. You put the units in the West Building, and that's how you solve that, that issue.
All right, thank you. Clark Brewer, and then I want to see if we can stop this discussion. Make sure we have the two points which were not controversial or needing discussion and then make a decision about what to do here.
Yeah, so I agree with Eve, Eve's trying to kind of simplify and, and cut through the BS and give us some perspective. On the other hand, I think changing it to between thirty days and prior to issuance of the building permit, I, I don't think that hurts and it gives the developer the flexibility. If what the planning board is really saying what they want, what the hell are you guys really going to do if it's off-site? Maybe we won't like it. Maybe we will. Maybe the developer could give us an update every ninety or a hundred and twenty days after the issuance of this special permit, if indeed it's issued. Ninety to a hundred and twenty days every three or four months. I think that's, that's probably reasonable. It could be a quick update, but an update nonetheless.
Thanks for that clarification. Paul Grady?
So final statement, the reason I find it very important, because I think Tom put it or someone put it, it is a case of not in my backyard. And I think that's important to everybody to know what backyard is that they're going to go in. Because as I said, if they use the West Building, you have three units going up. It may speed up the process. I don't know about that, about getting the project up and off the ground. But this is adding another layer. But again, I lean more, I'm not a fan of not in my backyard. So that's, that's my real hangup with this. And again, as I just said, it is adding another layer that you have to look, you have to find, you have to locate, develop, and negotiate when you have a building project currently in place that, again, without this extra added addition, could speed up the process and get the ball rolling faster. So I do think that those, these steps are important and and I'd leave it at that. But I think it's important that everybody knows it. There's a lot of transparency involved. And that's it.
All right, thank you. All right, um, thank you. Uh, I want to ask a question of Clark before I go to um, the two folks who want to speak. Clark, do you want to make a modification to the language in number two? So that instead of saying within thirty days, thirty days to the building permit?
Well, I think it's, it's uh, between thirty days of the issuance of this permit and the um, uh, issuance of a building permit. There's our special permit and then there's the building permit.
Right.
Somewhere in between. And I think that covers it. I think that covers it. But I will also say it's, uh, it's after ten o'clock and I'm, I'm not sure a lot of good work happens um, with these things uh, at this late at night. I'm, I'm definitely not going to uh, stay on, uh, you know, till midnight with you guys.
Okay, so um, Clark, I would like you to make a recommendation for a change in the language for number two. And then I want to clear this page.
Lauren captured the, what I recommended.
All right.
I mean, with the exception of getting an update every, every hundred and twenty days.
Uh, Paul Coleri.
I, I was just going back to my original suggestion, which was either thirty, building permit or before. And I, I think, you know, it was just captured there with the, with the modifications. So that's all I have.
All right, thank you. All right, let's make sure that Laura, I, I see you, Tom, but I want to actually get us to the bottom of this page. And we need to first have a discussion about how long we're going to go, because people have jobs tomorrow morning. Uh, Lauren, do you have all the points on page twenty-three that you need?
I believe so. There are a lot of discussions, so I would ask for, if there's something not on this redline document that needs to be, if.
Adam Bronski made uh, three specific points.
I did make those.
Okay.
I made the point to create or develop. I, I may have missed something else.
Uh, does anybody see something that's missing?
The, the last point was the issue about perpetuity that I don't know if the board has just made a decision about or not.
Ah, that's right. Um.
In number six.
All right, so I'm going to ask people to uh, display their son about this one. All right? So if you don't mind, please take all the hands down.
Madam, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'm very sorry to interrupt. Uh, in the interest of time, we'll, we'll concede that point. I, I, I disagree, but we'll concede that point in the interest of time.
Thank you very much. All right, so then I would like to, um, okay, so that clears everything on this page. We've changed the language on number two to make it distinct for number four. It's useful to have it, I pointed out the way you pointed it out. We have all the pieces that Adam wa- uh, wanted in here, some other modifications that we've made. Um, and um, in the interest of time, I will take the next two folks and then I'd really like to move along. Now let me, I, I think I, I want to get everybody's feeling about this. Is this page approximately correct for the members of the board? I'm going to call your name. Put your hand, yeah. Oh, I guess you can just, I can see you. Um, so uh, Clark Brewer.
Yeah, it looks fine.
Um, Paul, uh, Tom Callahan.
I, I, I don't want to like get into arguments amongst the members of the board. I don't know how this condition two got in here. We put it in there. And I don't think it's necessary. I think you're going to put the applicant in an unreasonable position and we won't get.
Um, we basically made a window, Tom, that reflects what the developers' interest is. And we're not constraining them. It's between thirty days.
We're putting artificial deadlines that aren't going to guarantee you getting the units that you want. They have, like I said, they've got a long permitting process. They also have built-in incentives to do what we want. But I, I just don't understand, I don't understand, as Eve said, I don't understand the point of these deadlines. But that's fair. That's the majority sentiment and the applicant will go along.
Well, I, I don't know if it's a majority sentiment.
Well, I, I, I think condition two should be deleted. Condition four deals with the situation.
Well, so we could modify number four. So Tom, remember, there's two things going on in number two. It's asking to have information in the interim presented to the planning board. And so if you want to wipe out the first part.
If it's simply reporting to us on their progress, that's fine. Never mind, it's, never mind. This is internal stuff with us and how it got written. So that's. I won't stand in the way of the change, so.
Okay, so we're, we're gonna, this is not settled, but we're going to move on. Now, let's take a, let's be realistic here, ladies and gentlemen. We have some difficulties coming ahead uh, that are detailed. And the question is, do we continue or do we stop? And we um, uh, continue the meeting uh, until the next meeting date, which happens to be open.
We meet on the twentieth. To deal with justice because we discussed earlier, yes, the twenty-seventh, we have no permits to deal with. But we, we have some other administrative and bylaw related discussions that also need a considerable amount of our time. Uh, I, I want to suggest we deal, either, either we deal with those issues on the twentieth and deal with this on the twenty-seventh or the reverse.
I'm open for the twentieth.
Okay, let me see, um, let me get a hand count here of who's available. Um, let's see. Paul Coleri, are you available on the twentieth? Uh, I'm going to move on to Eric Potter. Are you available on the twentieth?
I am.
Um, Tom Callahan, you're available on the twentieth.
Yes.
Clark Brewer, you're available on the twentieth.
Yeah.
Uh, Paul Grady.
Uh, could you send me notification? I have to check my calendar.
Okay, um, I'm available on the twentieth. So basically, we, I would recommend that we do this before we do anything else. That's my recommendation.
Lauren.
Um, I hate to be a stick in the mud, but I don't believe that, um, we have not versed this with counsel. I can't, I don't believe that she's available, our special counsel. And in addition, I am not, um, in office uh, starting tomorrow through the nineteenth. So I'm not going to be able to make modifications in the meantime, between now and the twentieth.
Okay, so that, that makes it.
And then on the twentieth, we deal with our other business and we deal with this on the seventh, on the twenty-seven. We, we need time for both. We need time for the other stuff and we need time for this.
Okay, so um, we have two, so basically, it sounds like everybody's going to try that we will make it. We now will have a twenty-seventh rather than twentieth. And um, where we stand now is whether we wish to close the hearing and start the deliberation process. And, and basically, the, the consequence of closing the hearing is we will receive no new information. But we have not received new information in this last meeting, and I don't believe we received new information in the last meeting. So.
Madam Chair, I think you asked them for new information on the financial impacts at this meeting. I don't know if.
Oh, so that can't go.
Well, you can, let's ask the lawyers, uh, whether or not you've asked for it now, if they can submit it after you've closed it. I don't know.
I, and if I may, I would be in favor of closing the hearing, subject to getting that information and anticipating what's ahead of us on page twenty-seventh, the performance bond, the surety bond. I would like the applicant to submit a suggested calculation. But short of that, I don't think we need any other information.
Okay, I have Clark Brewer and Adam Brodsky. Clark Brewer?
Yeah, so I, I recommend that we just continue the hearing, that we don't close the public hearing. We just um, pick up where we uh, left off in two weeks. Um, with the thought that we probably will close the public hearing at the end, end of that review and start deliberations and take a vote.
I would agree with Clark on that.
All right. Um, so then we will uh, continue the hearing on the twenty-seventh of January at six thirty P M. And um, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make.
No, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. We, we're gonna, we're gonna make a motion to continue the hearing and then we'll make a motion to adjourn. And Adam Brodsky wanted to.
Oh, sorry, you're right about that too. Thanks. Adam?
Oh, thank, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I don't know the availability of our team for any of those dates. Uh, we clearly don't have many points. And I know it's getting late and people need to go to work tomorrow. Our preference, of course, would be to try and push through and get this done tonight. By pushing off, we're going to have to, uh, we're going to have to check calendars.
Okay, so we have a third to go. And, and uh, let me uh, take a vote of the board. I'm going to go in alphabetical order and uh, the question that I have for you is um, would you prefer to close the meeting now or continue to go forward? Clark Brewer?
Uh, continue, right now.
All right, um, Tom Callahan?
Continue to at least eleven o'clock.
Paul Coleri?
Continue, Madam Chair.
Paul Grady?
Close.
Eric Potter.
And I'm sorry, I meant continue the hearing to, to another date.
Oh, okay.
Continue tonight.
Now, okay, guys, do I have to start over again?
Maybe, I don't know.
Okay, I'm going to start over again. The question is, shall we end the meeting now?
I just wanted to note that we've lost Eric.
Oh.
He's, he might be back again, but I.
Well, I guess we got his vote then, didn't we?
Yeah, right. Um, okay, so um, I'm going to go back around and ask. Shall we close the meeting now, this time at ten sixteen? Clark Brewer?
Yes.
Paul Grady?
Yes.
Tom Callahan?
If, if, if we continue to, to expedite the next meeting, add, I'm going to ask Adam and George, in addition to the suggesting of the performance bond, if in the remaining sections that we have to deal with from page twenty-four onward, if you have particular changes, issues, if you could send those to us, or send them to staff, so they can distribute to the house so that we can at least anticipate them and be ready to deal with them rather than just hearing them like we did tonight for the first time. If, if that can be done, so we can expedite the next meeting on the following, moving to, continuing this another night.
Okay, uh, Eric Potter, are you gone? So I, it's, it's problematic with Eric Potter. And, and so I would say that it is in the best interest of the hearing that we continue and um, we take it up on the twenty-seventh.
Amy George had a question.
Oh, sorry, uh, Mr. McGoldrick.
So Madam, Madam Chair, I, I'm very appreciative of all the effort that we, you guys have done over these last eight or nine months. And I understand this is a very, very important project for the town. Ted and I and our team has invested, if you guys invested a million hours, we've invested ten million. So why we'd like to get this done tonight, and I'm looking at my list, there's literally five little things left. If, if we can get a, some kind of understanding from the board that we'll send comments as uh, Mr. Callahan just asked, between, between now and the twenty-seventh. Can we expect some kind of action on the twenty-seventh? Because there's uh, that, this has just gone on longer than what we have all anticipated, so. Vote on the twenty-seventh?
George, that was what I, what I outlined for the twenty-seventh, but we can't give you any guarantees.
I'm not asking for a guarantee, I'm just asking for what the process would be then.
Our objective is to get to finish line and cross it.
Terrific. So uh, just to clarify, we can still, we'll send the comments on these last couple pages? Is that correct? Okay. All right, again, thank you very much. I really appreciate all the effort.
Thank you.
Make a motion, we continue to January twenty-seventh at six thirty.
Second?
On favor?
Clark Brewer, aye.
Brewer, Tom Callahan. Paul Grady.
Paul Grady, aye.
Amy Glassmeyer. Looks like Paul Coleri.
Aye, Paul Coleri.
Did I miss anybody? No. All right, thank you. We will continue the hearing on the twenty-seventh in January at six thirty P M. Information will be exchanged from the uh, uh, oh, I need to adjourn the meeting.
Are, are we going to meet the twentieth to discuss our other business that we need to discuss?
Um, I, from the standpoint of what we will do, I don't think, I, I don't know the answer to that right now. Um.
We, we have to have time to post it if we do. I just, I just, I mean, if, if, if we can get done with this quickly on the twenty-seventh and then have a couple of hours to discuss the, the bylaw business and why I'm coming here, that's fine. But if we don't anticipate that, you know, we've been trying to find extra time to discuss other issues we have to discuss. I'm suggesting we meet for two hours on the twentieth.
I would, I'm not disagreeing with you. I just can't tell you what we have scheduled so far.
Apparently, we have nothing. Apparently, we have no hearings, which makes the twenty-seventh open for us. And obviously, we have no hearing scheduled for the twentieth at this point, so they're both open for us, so. What I'm all asking is that we commit to the time to do what we need to do.
Tom, being in the business world, some of us have to check our calendars. That's what I.
I'm, I'm aware of that. I'm just asking because if we do meet the twentieth.
If, if we can for sure, we will use that time profitably for other business. All right, um. Okay, so we have closed the hearing and um, I would like a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Okay, Clark Brewer?
Aye.
Tom Callahan? Paul Coleri?
Paul Coleri, aye.
Paul Grady?
Aye.
Amy Glassmeyer, aye. Thank you very much.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you very much. Good night. Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year.
Night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.